Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. And I'd like to ask, welcome our deputy clerk, Kristen, who's taking the meeting tonight and ask her to call roll.
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmembers Gazola.
Yeah.
Councilmember Furtado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry. Mayor Bybee.
Present. And now all the, everyone in the audience can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I've asked Councilmember Furtado to lead us.
We're joined in the Pledge of Allegiance by a pledge to unify the United States of America and to build a country which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice law.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no special presentations and proclamations and we have no communications and petitions. This takes us to the oral request portion of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. I do have one member in the audience, excuse me, that would like to speak on an item and I'd like to call Tyler Hawes to the podium. Welcome.
Push the button on the little round thing.
Are we good? Great, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Hello, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tyler Hawes and I'm here on behalf of Civic Bell. We're a locally owned and operated civic engagement platform. And we're, we're connecting local level government officials such as yourselves to their constituents. And we're using a verification process that sets us apart from some of the other familiar faces in the scene, like maybe a Facebook or a Nextdoor. We're really trying to get underneath the issue of toxic banner and bots kind of getting in the way of political discourse by having an easier, free-to-access, ground-level way for civic engagement to kind of reach the people. So, one such major difference that sets us apart from kind of other people in the space is beyond the fact that we're a smaller local group, starting from scratch, is that we use residency verification. So, we're ensuring that everybody who's in the conversation on a public policy topic is a real verified resident constituent of your community. We're using a pretty non-intrusive process, there's more information on that I can provide, but I'll spare you at this time. So Civic Bell has a pretty established presence in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. Some notable members using Civic Bell are Assembly Member Mark Berman, who represents this area. Santa Clara County's District Attorney is Jeff Rosen, he's using Civic Bell. Others at the Santa Clara County Supervisor level, city council, municipal councils, et cetera, like Rob Moore of Los Gatos, et cetera. And so with kind of this background aside, this is moving to kind of the reason I'm here tonight specifically. So, we've recently opened up our community issues feature that allows residents to start a conversation, create kind of a ground ball. Hey, this is what we, the people, are looking to introduce to our local council. And so with this new feature, some residents, just in the last couple of days, put out an issue saying they would like to consider the expansion of VTA lines. And I recognize that that's not specifically in the council's jurisdiction. But, given that it seems to interest the city, I implore you guys to use Civic Bell to further look into ways that people in the community can interact with their officials, decreasing those barriers to entry. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the information. Is there anyone else in the chamber that wishes to speak on an oral request? Please come to the podium and...
I signed it, by the way. Shawn Mendelson.
Oh.
I did what you said on the little... Yeah.
Welcome, Shawn.
Thank you, how are you guys? Do I press the button or not?
No.
Thanks, council, thanks, mayor, good to see you. I started coming here January of 2022, pushing my agenda, which is to save the planet for my children, Climate Action Plan. I'm ecstatic that the city hired Tiffany Hudson as the Environmental Specialist Program, I have the opportunity to speak to her, I think it's a great asset to have. Unfortunately, I know it's gonna take another year and a half, which I understand the bureaucracy of it all, so three years from my point of interest, January of last year. So, we're gonna have an amazing climate action plan. The reason I'm here is since we have to wait a year and a half to have that plan, why not do what we did last November? You guys made bold reach codes that were awesome about the gas lines and everything. We talked then and we couldn't add in kitchen remodels because, as the lawyer stated for the city, we couldn't, at the time, slow down the process of getting those, getting that to be part of the reach code. So, I implore you to think about things we can do ahead of the Climate Action Plan to support our, to support climate resilience, such as when people do kitchen remodels in our city, that they can't add a gas line anymore. That's a little one step. By the time this Climate Action Plan is completed, it's awesome, I'm sure we'll be one of the best cities in the county as an example for how to take care of our kids and the planet. Thank you for your time, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Shawn. Is there anyone else in the chamber that wishes to speak? And I don't see anybody online that wishes to... Great. So, I'll move on to council announcements. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Historic Preservation Board. To find out more about this committee or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117 or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Please join the city of Campbell and the Santa Clara County Library District for the Measure O Library Renovation Project Groundbreaking Ceremony at 10:00 AM on Friday, November 10th at 77 Harrison Avenue. The Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation will host its annual Veterans Day Ceremony at 9:00 AM on Saturday, November 11th, on Orchard City Green located at City Hall. For more information, please visit campleveteransmemorial.org. You're cordially invited to the Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation's 16th Anniversary Saluting Our Veterans Gala Dinner and Fundraiser on Friday, November 17th at 4:30 PM. For more information, please visit campleveteransmemorial.org. The Ainsley House is excited to be open this holiday season with holiday events for the whole family from November 16th through December 21st. The Ainsley House will be decorated with the theme "Christmas Cravings." Tours through the Ainsley House will be unguided and self-paced. The Ainsley House and boutique will be open during public touring hours and holiday events. The Campbell Museum Foundation's annual holiday fundraiser, holiday teas and tours, will take place December 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, and 10th. Santa Claus will make a special appearance at the Ainsley House on Saturday, December 2nd from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. One of the best ways to see the Ainsley House decorated for the holidays is to attend one of two evening open house events on December 17th and December 21st. Reservations for holiday events and more information can be found at campbellmuseums.com. We'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And, do we have anybody online? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 13. And I want to note that there's a desk item on item 13. Second. Thank you, there's a motion by Councilmember Gazola and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 13, including the desk item. Item 10. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Gazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry. Hi. Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Are you here? We'll now move on to public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Members of the public may be allotted up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. Applicants, appellantants, and their representatives may be allotted up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to a total of three minutes maximum for closing statements. Items requested, recommended for continuance are subject to council's consent at the meeting. Item 14 is a continued public hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use permit with site and architectural review to allow reconstruction of a Shell gasoline service station with an expanded convenience store, including off-site alcohol beverage sales, a drive-through car wash, and 24-hour operational hours, and a tree removal permit, tree removal permit of all onsite trees for property located at 570 East Hamilton Avenue, file number PLN 2022-44. And before we begin, do any council members have any ex parte communications to disclose? Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, I'd like to disclose that I met with the applicant and representatives of their team on two occasions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, I did meet with the team prior to our previous council meeting and I did speak to them via email asking some questions.
Thank you. And our presenter this evening is Daniel Flama, Senior Planner. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, good evening. This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use permit with site and architectural review and a tree removal permit for the Shell gas station at 570 East Hamilton Avenue. So, my presentation will include the plans and discussion and the analysis of the planning commission hearing as well as the additional materials that were provided to use desk items, which staff did have an opportunity to review. So, the project site is a two-thirds acre parcel located at the corner of Hamilton and Salmar avenues in the old C2 General Commercial Zoning District and corresponding General Commercial, General Plan, Land Use District. It is developed with a Shell service station that was approved by the Planning Commission in August of 1983. That application before you was initially reviewed as a study session, a preliminary application review by the Planning Commission in late 2021. That application was reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 27th of this year and by 601 vote denied. The denial specifically included denial of the conditional use permit with site and architectural review for the project, which encompasses an entire reconstruction of the facility, including four double-sided fueling dispensers, a drive-through car wash, a 2,400 square foot convenience store with beer and wine sales, a trash enclosure, and continued 24-hour operation of the facility, as well as a tree removal permit to allow removal of all onsite trees. Here is the site plan that was reviewed and rejected by the Planning Commission. It shows the new convenience building located at the intersection corner. Behind it, you would have a ceiling canopy with the four dispensers and behind that would be a drive-through car wash. Access to the side would be taken from both Hamilton Avenue and Salmar Avenue. And parking spaces would be located adjacent to the convenience market as well as along the perimeter of the side of the four corner. In terms of the building, in response to feedback that was provided at the 2021 study session, the applicant's architect did redesign the building to attempt to front the corner, showing here a entry feature at the interior side, functionally the back of the building would be facing Hamilton Avenue. Materials are shown as a brick veneer with metal accents. The basis of denial largely rested with determination by the Planning Commission that the proposed use was not consistent with the former general plan. This application was deemed to complete under the Permit Streamlining Act prior to the effective date of the current general plan, so it was reviewed under the prior general plan. That said, these policies are largely replicated throughout the current general plan. Specific policies that the Planning Commission found noncompliance with included policies regarding city gateways, transit support, building orientation, building placement, building design, and policies pertaining to reducing gasoline fuel consumption. The Planning Commission also found that the project was also not consistent with the finding that requires the commission to determine that the project would be compatible to existing and future uses. As discussed in the staff report, this area is intended to be a vibrant mixed-use district under the pending Hamilton Avenue precise plan. So first, looking at the basis of denial with regard to the gateway policies. The former general plan, again, and current general plan for that matter, has a concept of gateways, effectively main entries into the city that are intended to really highlight that entry since of arrival into Campbell. And this is really one of the more critical ones because of its location of the southbound Highway 17 exits. And as you exit the freeway into the city, you have very obvious view of this project site. Now, Strategy LU261B specifically indicated that these types of major intersections should be anchored with landmark buildings that incorporate distinctive architectural character. And the Planning Commission found that a gas station, a convenience market, cannot achieve that requirement. Similarly, the general plan had a multitude of policies regarding aligning land use with regional transportation plans. As council is aware, this site is very proximate to the Hamilton Avenue by rail station and this entire area is intended to support higher intensity, more aggressive land use planning, evidenced by higher FARs and mixed-use developments that can really take advantage of that proximity to transit as well as the freeway access and proximity to downtown Campbell. Then moving on just into building orientation, although the applicant did try to connect the building to the corner as shown in the plans reviewed by the Planning Commission, functionally that corner was just gonna be a storage room. So, this was really just a facade and not a true treatment of the corner as otherwise required by general plan Strategy LUT 9.3D, which requires that buildings be oriented to the street and frame those intersections. In terms of materials, the materials that were shown to the Planning Commission effectively is this brick veneer. It's a very thin material and would not have the heft that one would normally expect from actual true brick as the general plan would otherwise require. It does indicate high-quality creative design using long-lasting, high-quality building materials. And then looking at fuel consumption policies. So, the policy LU21.2C requires that the city consider supporting state and local federal legislation to reduce motor vehicle emissions and fuel consumption within the region. The governor, two years ago, issued an executive order requiring that the Air Resource Board adopt rules that would phase out gas-powered motor vehicles, which CARP did do, advancing its advanced clean air two regulations that will eventually phase out non-zero emissions vehicles by 2035. In further support of alternative vehicles, of alternative fuel vehicles, the Congress also passed the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 that will provide significant tax rebates to encourage the purchase of non-gas-powered vehicles. And so in light of these policies, the Planning Commission determined that allowing further future investment into gasoline was not consistent with the general plan. Then lastly, looking again at the future land use compatibility. So, the city currently is right now looking at responses to and requests for proposals for creation of a Hamilton Avenue precise plan. This location is effectively dead center within the planning area. That plan, as articulated by the general plan, does call for a mixed-use environment that would be much more weighted to the pedestrian experience, whether they're motor vehicles. Placing a gas station right in the middle of a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented district was also not consistent inconsistent with future uses of the nearby area. Now, with regards to the revised plans, the materials that were provided to you were in attempt to address some of the concerns that were brought up at the Planning Commission meeting. These include some nominal changes, including modifying that corner entrance, introducing a welcome sign, some landscaping, hardscaping improvements, additional EV chargers, and an upgrade to the brick veneer. Looking at the before and after. You can see some minor changes to the brick, you have that double-force brick. The applicant is now showing a new entry door and a "Welcome to Campbell" sign. Two issues with this, however. That glass is still spandrel glass, so that will still not really be too transparent into the building. The brick is still veneer, so a little extra coursing doesn't change that basic back, the material's not high-quality. In staff's experience, that storefront will likely be obscured with tinting and signs and largely be unused since most customers to the convenience store will be arriving from the true front, which will be from the interior of the site. And in the end, this will simply be a dead entrance. And then lastly, the city cannot compel a corporation to provide speech. So, even though the applicant indicates that that will be a "Welcome to Campbell" sign, there is no legal mechanism to compel that to actually occur. And then with regard to the site improvements, the applicant notes some native plantings. Staff will identify that all landscaping is already required to comply with very stringent state mandated water efficiency requirements, which generally require native planting since those types of plants do tend to be more water concentration-oriented. The plans show the entire back of parking stalls to be EV-only charging, which seems kind of unusual. Even if that wasn't required, EV-only parking, we would also note that EV charging tends to work in situations where drivers are parked for a significant period of time. That typically would be their homes or places of work or a shopping center, not a quick-stop location where a shopper will be heading out of the store in five minutes. And then lastly, the additional paving is shown at the corner, a very nominal improvement that doesn't functionally change the building design. Which fundamentally, going back to the original revised, they are functionally the same building in every way that matters. It is not a landmark building and in no way shows any distinctive architectural character. It is not a gateway building. Now, looking at the appeal issues that were provided by the appellant's and your staff reports, indicated that the project will improve onsite and offsite circulation. That was not consideration of the denial. Indicated that this proposal would increase pedestrian access. And while that's true, and not only so, it would not do so as much as a proper gateway building would that would actually be designed to cater to pedestrians and not cars. He also indicated that the project would allow him to comply with current state local codes. However, he is already required, the state is obligated to issue permits to address the single, his underground storage tank, which currently only has a single hole and not a double. And that could be done right now without any discretionary review, it's a ministerial permit. Again, also indicating the addition of EV parking spaces, which as I noted are little certificates. And then the indication that the project would result in additional tax dollars for the city, which really given the small scale of the project are all, again, are minor fiscal benefits to the city. The applicant's attorney also provided a statement, provides some additional commentary, indicating that the 2016 CEP was found consistent with the general plan. While technically true, that was a modification to an existing conditional use permit that simply formalized stations' pre-existing 24-hour operations as required by city ordinance. It was really dislimited to a discussion of hours, not any physical expansion, alteration to the buildings themselves. The attorney also indicated that the project reduces vehicle trips and density at the site. This was a bit of a confounding one, it appears to conflate trip generation with gasoline usage, which are distinct issues. Moving on, he also indicated that the project would adhere to general plan policies regarding building materials and designs. But it does appear in staff's opinion that evidence and records simply does not support that conclusion being that this is not a gateway building. He indicated that the convenience market would provide deeper services required by residences. While true, a proper gateway building would also do the same as the ground floor would inevitably be some sort of retail and/or service use catering to nearby residents and employees. And then lastly, indicating that the car wash would provide some sort of environmental benefit, but there is no city policy that says that we should be supporting car wash because they're good for the environment. Campbell is well-served by car washes. In conclusion, as the applicant has not demonstrated any errors in fact or the adopted findings, staff does recommend city council adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the conditional use permit with site and architectural review and the tree removal permit. For the record, as an alternative, the council wishes to favorably consider the application. You may make a motion to continue the public hearing and direct staff to prepare appropriate sequel documentation in a draft resolution. So, do note that since the recommendation by staff and the decision by planning commission was to deny the application, there has not been any formal sequel analysis of this project. If the application does require preparation of an initial study, that will need to be reviewed by the planning commission prior to consideration by the city council. And with that, I will take any questions council may have.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel, for the presentation. So, a lot of the conversation is around what is a gateway? Saying it does not meet that, what is the gateway? What would make it a gateway building or gateway state?
It will probably be one of the more critical questions that will need to be addressed as part of the Hamilton Avenue precise plan to really ferret out that the city's understanding of what a gateway building should look like have more specific architectural, building use standards. Right now, that policy is admittedly a bit vague. And currently, the new general plan has a policy that discourages new development within the gateway or within the Hamilton Avenue precise... Precise Area for two years, or until the Hamilton Avenue Precise Plan is adopted, whichever occurs earlier.
They're being submitted under the old general plan, so how can they be held accountable to a policy in the new general plan?
Well, I was indicating that the policy exists simple. I mean, it's a fair point to what is a gateway building, but it seems it has to be something more than simply a gas station.
So by the sheer fact that there's a glass round tower that's unique in of itself, and you would not necessarily know it's a gas station, you're saying that still does not meet the criteria, but we don't have a criteria? That's what I'm trying to figure out. It seems like we're making very subjective statements of that this is not a gateway, when we don't have a definition, and when they're going under the old general plan to say, well, the new one says you shouldn't do anything for two years, but they're not under that parameter right now.
It is a discretionary process, which staff has a level of subjectivity based on, of course, your decision.
Councilmember Lopez?
I have two questions. First, a follow-up from the vice mayor's. One is, how does, I understand that the challenge is with just where we are in the process of determining, you know, the precise plan, which has to come later. But how does that process square with the requirements that we're under to have objective standards?
The requirement for objective standards pertains to residential projects, which have special protection under the law.
And there's no application for commercial projects?
I'm sorry.
There's no, that doesn't have any application?
That's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that distinction. And my other question broader is just in the absence, moving, you know, up from this decision, or, you know, just kind of thinking about what's in the general plan for the site. What are the mechanisms for the council, for the city, to ensure that there is project, that there's development there, in keeping with the goals that we're laying out?
Well, again, that would really be the preparation and adoption of a precise plan for this area. That is really the whole point of a planning process, is provide some more predictability in the development review, and to more clearly explain to the development community and the city's expectations.
And, thank you. And could you say more about the two-year timeframe that you mentioned also in the last question?
Correct. So the new general plan recognizes that the city at some point does need to further explain its expectations as part of the gateway policies. So it does have a policy that discourages new applications from being approved for two years, not just at this gateway, but all city gateways.
In what form does that discouragement take in the policy?
It's a policy that ultimately the city council or planning commission could exercise to deny application feels is inappropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
So we're saying they fall under the old general plan.
Correct.
So how can we hold them to a rule in the new general plan?
Well, the gateway policies in terms of the distinctive architecture, that is found in both the old and new general plan.
Specifically referencing the two years or till 2025. We cannot hold them accountable to that, because that's not, they've submitted prior to that deadline.
That is true. Also highlight, too, that the concerns that are expressed here were identified in 2021, ahead of their formal application as part of the planning commission's study session.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'll invite the appellant and/or their representative to speak, and you have up to five minutes.
Three seconds to set up. Last one. Just go to say some time. Honorable council members, good evening. My name is Sonny Goyle, and I'm the business owner here in Campbell, operating the Shell Station at 570 East Hamilton Avenue. I'm proposing a redesign on my site that would incorporate EV charging stations, car wash, public restrooms, improved traffic at the intersection, and another number of other enhancements. While it's uncomfortable to come before you and take issue on the opinions of the planning commission, we see this hearing as not as an exercise in argumentation, but rather an opportunity for us to collaborate on a proposal to drastically improve what has been identified as a gateway to the city. My hope tonight is that we can have a dialogue on how to make this project proposal acceptable to city leaders. We're not asking you to hastily reverse the planning commission's decision, but instead to collaborate with us on how to get this to a place where you yourself will say, maybe it's not exactly what I put here, but it's a huge improvement over what's there now. In fact, we are coming to you tonight, having made a number of changes to our proposal, after hearing some of your feedback. The proposal before you tonight has a revised interior layout to incorporate an entrance facing the street intersection that will include a "Welcome to Campbell" sign, and we'd be happy to work with a local artist or the Civic Improvement Commission on its design. We've added EV charging stations to every stall in front of the store, except for the ADA parking stall. We've incorporated California native planting material and trees and drought-tolerant landscaping along both frontages and decorative concrete paving used at the building entries and walkways. And we've added double-soldered courses of brick veneer, breaking up building mass and creating more visual interest. These changes were the result of a productive discussion with a few of you, and we firmly believe they have made the project before you tonight much better. We are open to other modifications that can help you support this project, because we want to collaborate. It does seem the primary issue staff has with this project is its continued use as a gas station. And though, and thought it was dismissed in staff report, we cannot ignore the fact that there is a 23-year lease left here. Candidly, if you read the staff report, it says the city doesn't want a gas station here, and the city's land use policy in this case is essentially to refuse massive improvements in order to accelerate the process of us going on business. It even implies that market conditions could lead to a situation where our landlord will want to break our lease. If that really is the planning department's land use policy, so be it, but we think that's disrespectful to business owners that are working hard to serve the needs of the community. There are only nine gas stations in Campbell, including ours, and we believe that right now, people still need us, particularly our most vulnerable residents, who work hard and need to fill up their tanks to get to where they need to go. Yes, the future might look very different, but we're just not there yet. All that said, we do understand that you and city staff are tasked with looking at the city's long-term vision, and for that reason, we spent time working on a 2046 site plan, which illustrates how the site could look in the future. Retaining the improved convenience market, we are proposing by incorporating a residential building where the canopy currently exists. Approving the continued use and improvements of my gas station state does not prohibit it from becoming something else when the time is right. Today, we want to be here, serving the Campbell community. We are needed here, and we want to make the property better. To say our 23-year lease is irrelevant is simply untrue. It's extremely relevant. So we are asking that you work with us to improve what's here right now and not let it languish. After all, we are being told the site is a gateway, and we want to achieve that with you. Upholding the planning commission's decision doesn't give you your ideal project. It gives you what you've already got, a fairly sad-looking property that could be much more inviting and vibrant. Instead of letting the perfect be the enemy of better, don't simply deny progress. Tell us how we can earn your support. The staff report contains technical jargon, but maybe it's not perfect, but it could be better. Better is improving traffic at the intersection. Better is creating a safer customer experience. Better is installing EV charging stations. Better is beautifying the site. Better is incorporating a welcoming element to the corner at the entrance intersection. Maybe a gas station isn't a landmark building, or maybe it could be, but it is what's here now, and we're before you tonight, trying to make it better. Thank you for your time. I hope we can earn your support to improve the property. Just this last bit, here tonight with me to help answer any questions are my project architect, Mathana Ibrahim, and our land use council, Justin Zucker from Reuben Judy's Press.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
And is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? And is everybody online? So before I close the public hearing, then, I would invite you back up to provide any closing comments, if you have any to provide to the council.
Good afternoon. Justin Zucker from Reuben Judy's Press, behalf of the applicant. The city is effectively enforcing a moratorium on development at the site, while admittedly saying it doesn't apply. We urge you to grant the appeal and approve the project as revised and presented to you tonight. As mentioned, should you be interested in exploring that option, you have the ability tonight to approve a motion of intent to approve the application and come back with direction to staff in intervening time to prepare the necessary environmental documentation to comply with SEQA, possibly a Class 1, Class 3, and/or a infill Class 32 categorical exemption, the use of which was recently confirmed in 2021 for a gas station in Protect Tustin Ranch for City of Tustin. In Campbell, the ratio of jobs to resident workers is 1.065, indicating that Campbell is a moderate net importer of workers, meaning that people can work and live in the same community, which also in turn requires access to daily living needs. With the vast majority of workers commuting to work, 58% of the city's housing stock, single-family homes, people transit by private cars. It's a fact of reality. So we're here today to advance a project that is consistent with the general plan land use designation of general commercial, which supports uses that require high vehicular exposure, such as this site right off of the highway off-ramp. We've added a City of Campbell Welcome Sign, and the city has stated a law that they think that could impede their ability to enforce it, but the fact remains that an applicant cannot oppose a condition of approval imposed on a project, and if not impose, it becomes a viable enforceable condition. We stand here today, willing, enabled, and ready to commit to a sign. There's been options presented where we could engage others to help with the design of it. We do acknowledge there is a City of Campbell Sign Welcome right next to the Coles Building, right on Campbell exit, right there at Hamilton. So there is precedent, and we could replicate that here if there is a desire. We're available for any questions if you have any. We hope that you'll consider this project and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for staff and to the planning commission for their thorough review. And they are following the things that have been written in the general plan, except for I take some issue with some of the things that are in the general plan. I'm going to go through those. When I spoke to the applicant, I posed the questions of what happens in the future, what happens in 2035 when the governor has said we are not going to have fuel cars and gasoline cars anymore. So some of the drawings that he showed was from me saying to him, well, where are you going to be in 25 years? Where, I didn't ask, I didn't give solutions. I just said, where are you going to be? What is going to happen in 25 years? And so, we have the future, and we have right now. How do we get there? And this is a transition period. And during this transition period, what do we do? Do we leave this ugly corner there where you get off the freeway and you see gas pumps? And I say, that's not acceptable for me for 20 years to be looking at an ugly gas station, excuse my language, but it's not very attractive right now. So I look at a gas station as a waystation. We are one of the last exits before you go to Highway over the hill to Santa Cruz. We want to be welcoming to visitors and travelers that come from other areas. You get off the freeway, what do you need? You need to go to the bathroom. You need to rest. You need to get fuel. You need to get food. If we're saying a gas station doesn't belong there, I'm saying, let's not call it a gas station anymore. It's a service station or a waystation. It's a place for people to get from traveling to Campbell. It's a place for people who live here to get gas. I think you said there's only 10 of them in the city. It is some tax value. And so, it's going to be there. They have a 23-year lease. There will be a station there, whether it's for gasoline, fuel, charging station, service station, convenience store. They have a right. We cannot claim eminent domain and take their land from them. I don't think we want to do that. So how can we work with them? They seem very willing to work with us as a city. And if we don't improve it now, when? If we turn this down and say flat-out no, then it's going to sit there for quite a long time and be this ugly thing when you get off the freeway. And it is our main gateway. This is what we are fighting for, is to have something really attractive when you get off the freeway. So I ask questions like, well, what is a gateway? What is a building that a gateway really look like? And I'm looking, I don't, actually, I do not like this new revised rendering as much as the other drawing. And the other drawing showed a round glass tower, whether the glass is translucent, transparent. It's a glass tower that the only other place that we have is the light rail station. That happens to be squared off and not round, but it is a glass tower. So I do see some correlation between the architecture. If we make it five feet taller, does that make it more of a gateway statement? If we make the circle two feet rounder, does that make it more of a gateway station? So I'm looking at what the permit findings were and what the planning commission said. The first permit finding was, A, it complies with all applicable provisions of the building municipal code. Yes. Is it consistent with the general plan? And the answer is no. And it's why? It's because we have a gateway policy that says a sense of arrival. Well, what is a sense of arrival? To me, it's something different than most of you in this room, and we haven't had a chance to have that conversation. So we've got the cart a little before the horse, but that doesn't mean we can't keep moving forward. So on page 178, it talks about allowing an investment in the continuation of a gas station. It would be inconsistent with the purpose of the trajectory of the state and the federal policy. That's great on paper, but we're not there yet. We're out 10 or 15 years. I mean, I've been driving to Southern California, watching millions of people go by and thinking, how are you going to tell us we're not going to have a car soon? People are going to have cars. People are going to be traveling here. And so I want to know that there's a way we can work with this company. They're willing to put in a sign. We're not telling them you have to, and Daniel even said we can't enforce it, but they're in here showing us they're willing to put in a sign. They're giving us a little concept, but they're not saying it's hard and fast. This is the sign I want. They're saying, I'm willing to work with you. We're willing to be a collaboration. And I want to know how we can be fair to the city, fair to our citizens, but fair to a property owner who is our gateway and has a opportunity, I see us as an opportunity right now, to really make a statement, whether it's the glass tower getting taller, wider. I disagree with the whole brick veneer conversation for structural reasons and everything else, but to me, they seem willing to, they already have one option of how to get around the brick veneer. So I would like to entertain with my fellow council members some options of how to move forward. And I spoke to the city manager, and the attorney mentioned about a motion of intent. I'm not sure what that exactly means, but the things that I had asked the city manager is if we flat-out deny the appeal, what happens? And I was told that for two years, they can't come back with a similar application. What if we deny it without prejudice, which means we're saying that there could be something that comes forward? It may mean new fees, but we could do it with conditions of approval. And the conditions of the approval could be things like work with the city, make the oval wound or taller, bigger, get rid of the brick, have a new sign. What does that look like? Have some little more design elements, and then come back and go through the process and have us have approval. The other option is to accept the appeal, excuse me, I'm talking too long. Another option would be to accept the appeal with conditions, and the new resolution would have to come back. So what are those new conditions? Well, to me, it's make it a little more prominent. Well, to me, it's make it a little more prominent, which is a subjective term, and look at new signage. Now, understanding the construction industry like I do, you could say to them, leave us three feet in width, ten feet long on the corner. We're going to put a sign there. We don't know what the sign looks like right now. Save us the space, run power to the location, and give us six months, nine months to work on what a sign would look like. And I've seen heads shaking yes over there, that they would be, could help us in coming up with what a gateway is. Part of why I don't like the revised design is you're painting the whole corner and you're getting rid of the landscape, where to me, I get off the freeway, I want to see some green, I want to see a nice sign, I want to see a nice architectural element. I want to say, I have arrived, I'm in Campbell, this looks wonderful. And I don't know that we're that far from there. And so I'm trying to persuade my fellow council members to think about this as a way to really shine in the industry of how do we transition to this next twenty years? This is not being done in a vacuum. People all over the country are in this mode right now. How do we get to where we want to be? And it's not, you don't go from A to Z and not have all the steps in between. So I see this as our opportunity to do what we've been talking about and making our city really great and wonderful, and really try to keep, allow this gas station to call it something else than gas, a waystation, a service station, it's a place to get food, it's a place to have a resting stop, it's a place to invite people that are coming to visit, a place to come and say, hey, I mean, what if we even had a little booth in there with little things where, oh, here's the attractions in Campbell? I mean, to me, there's a lot of things that we could do and work with them. So I think I've said enough, but I hope that you guys could see what I'm trying to portray and that let's have something that looks nice, let's then allow them to do something on their property. Maybe this isn't exactly what we want yet, but they're already willing to say, here in twenty years, we're going to add another building. I had actually asked them, what can you do in twenty years when we are paring down our cars? And so they show that there is a viable alternative for the future. I even went as far as to said to the city manager, you've got gas tanks on your ground? What happens in twenty years if you take the gas tanks up and put water tanks in there? We've got gigantic water storage for all our drought that we're going to have. I mean, come on, we need to think really big, you guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Scazzola?
Yeah, so I don't want to speak for anyone, but I know Sergio is on the VTA board, I'm on the VTA pack, and we are moving towards trying to create these walkable, livable communities with access to transportation. Obviously, there's a major transportation hub right there, right next door. And so I ultimately agree with staff recommendations, and I feel that they need to go back to the planning department if anything. I'm not in support of this. And see, I might have some more comments later, but that was my first point.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I'm happy to chat. I really appreciate the thoughtful discussion, the applicants, and thank you especially to the staff, not just for the thorough presentation, but for actually going back, you know, a design that we received, actually going back and offering detailed feedback that helps to inform our discussion. I know it's a lot of work to pull that together. I, for me, it's a little, you know, I agree with a lot of, with a number of things the vice mayor said, but ultimately, for me, the decision is a little bit simpler because it's, if, if we, the framework that I'm thinking is if we don't approve this project or a version like it, are we going to then get a gateway that fulfills all these criteria that we want? And I just don't see how that's the case. And so then the decision doesn't come down to, do we have something that is walkable, it supports transit, and it's this beautiful gateway? It's, do we have, do we get something that's an improvement, or do we have what we have now? That's really the way I see it. And that's a tough situation to, for us to be in, because we, you know, we heard from speaker today, I think we voted unanimously support, we support on a climate action plan. I'm one of the biggest advocates you'll find for public transit. I actually think we'll get there faster than we, than some people might think, because we need to. So I think, so I absolutely think, you know, the need is there, and the trends are going down, and gasoline use is declining for California faster than the rest of the country, all these things. But at the end of the day, that's, it's just, it's, I can't separate that from the fact of, you know, we, there are other projects here, and we're going to be doing this precise plan that I think is really critical. And we are going to be making this neighborhood more walkable and livable. And so to me, the decision is, do we have something there that is at least an improvement? Or do we have what we have now? That's really what I see as the alternative. And I have a tough time supporting that. I am grateful that we have applicants that clearly are willing to work with us. I think we can all think of other properties, and I won't name any, but, you know, you can think of them around the city. We've had numerous cases where applicants have not had that attitude, and where we just have empty lots, or we just have eyesores, just because somebody is not willing to put in the improvements. And I just, I don't want to risk having that on something that, as we've said, is such a critical entry point into the city. It's also, you know, regretfully, we don't at this point have more clear guidance on what a gateway is. That's not the applicant's fault, that's not staff's fault, that's just unfortunately where we are in the process. I know we'll be developing that clarity, but it's also difficult for me to justify holding them to a standard that we haven't created yet. I don't think that's their fault. So I'm personally not at a place of saying, you know, just, I'm not, as you know, an architectural expert, so I can't say, oh, you know, these are the characteristics that we want. But I do think that we have an applicant that is willing to work with us, engage and have those kind of productive discussions. I do, I'm sure there are things that could be improved in ways in which it could be tied architecturally to other key points in the city. I think there's potential there. And I want to take advantage of the opportunity to have that dialogue and discussion, as opposed to having something that is going to be an eyesore and take us even further away from the goals that we have for this area. So that's how I see it. It's not necessarily either way an appealing decision for me, but I think this is the best, this would be the best outcome that we would have, that we could have to continue the process and be able to have some more of those discussions.
Councilmember Fertado?
Yes, first of all, let me acknowledge the work of the planning commission and the staff in their presentations, but also, of course, of the applicant and their presentation and their ideas. For me, some of my comments relate to some concerns I have for the intensity of use, the fact that it is a gas station, that it will become, or is proposed to have, a car wash, and that it also be an EV station as well. Most of the charging stations that I'm aware of, you generally want to park your car for a period of time while you go do something else. And the problem is that location, there is not a something else that people really need to go to. I'm sorry, but there's not a shopping center nearby. It's inconvenient to walk all the way downtown in other locations, so I don't know that the charging element would be used very much. With respect to the car wash, I have some concerns whether, how useful that would be as well. We have car washes nearby. At the corner, of course, of Hamilton and Baskin, there's a dedicated car wash. Well, it is, it does serve guests as well. But then around the corner on Baskin Avenue, there is another sort of more intense hand car washing. And then if you go the other way on Hamilton Avenue and make a right turn and go north on Winchester, I know it's outside the city limit, but there is a gas station at the corner of Payne and Winchester with a car wash. My observation is that that type of station doesn't seem to generate a lot of car washes. And I haven't done any objective studies, but I just don't see a lot of cars going through there. So I'm not sure about the intensity of the use of all of these things, the expansion of the store and so on. The site is a little difficult to get into. If you're traveling east on Hamilton Avenue, of course, it is pretty convenient to make a right turn, that's not a big problem. But if you're traveling west, you have to get in the single left-turn lane, which takes a while to go through various cycles of the stoplight to make the left turn and then pull in there. And then, of course, when you leave, you either have to go through town and, or obviously turn left and right, but the point I'm making, there's a lot of traffic there. So I do have these concerns. And then finally, I'm not sure procedurally, and certainly I'm not in a position to render a legal opinion, but it seems to me what is before us is whether we accept or deny the action of the planning commission and not to go beyond that. If we want to go beyond that, then I think the developer should go through the normal route of making proposals that would go before staff, before planning commission, and then come to the council again. I suppose if it, you know, if it were illegal, we'd be so advised of that, but it just seems the inappropriate thing to propose a lot of changes that would come directly to the city council for us to weigh in on, like tonight, without it going through what I think would be the usual procedure. So those are just my observations and thoughts right now.
Councilmember Scazzola?
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Fertado's most recent comments. It's definitely, you should go back to the planning commission, that's just the proper thing to do, first of all. And I do have a few more comments from earlier. So Vice Mayor Landry, in regards to this being a service station, oh, it's right off the freeway, well, you can just hang a right or a left, and there are, you know, within a couple blocks, there's several gas stations there as well, so it's not too inconvenient for someone coming off of a long trip before going over the mountain to refuel. Also, the words that's ringing in my ears right now, nominal changes. So even though they brought these changes, to our attention, staff believes these are nominal changes, and I would agree with that. And yeah, we keep talking about the climate action plan, you know, so let's, if we go for this, you know, I feel like we're going against it. Another thing, I mean, I honestly just, I really trust staff and the planning commission's expertise, and so I'm just telling you right now, I'm definitely going with their recommendations. And there just seems to be a lot of strikes against this plan. It's not one or two, it's a whole bunch of strikes against it, according to the planning commission and staff. What else do I have to say? I swear there's more than, oh, yeah, and last, just, you know, nobody can predict the future. Obviously, there are plans, we're trying to do our very best to go into this new future that's much more green in every way. But I keep hearing eyesore, and honestly, I don't really see it as an eyesore, it's just a gas station. And actually, there is a little bit of greenery in the trees and everything. I'm used to it, I drive that every day, you know, and it doesn't bother me, it doesn't look like, you know, some, oh, look at that old building with a bunch of, you know, broken windows, and we got to, we got to fix it up, you know? Quite frankly, it looks fine, it just looks like a normal gas station with a little bit of greenery around it, it's hardly noticeable at all, so I don't feel the eyesore argument applies here. In fact, I have to say, I think that the plans are actually more of an eyesore. It just, I don't know, for me personally, it just doesn't look it. So it's less obtrusive, in its current state, to me than what's being proposed here. So anyways, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
And briefly, I just want to clarify procedurally, Councilmember Fertado, I agree with what you said in terms of what would be appropriate to go back through the process. So what I'm saying, if it wasn't clear, is I would support going back and through that process, trying to get improvements. I don't want to be on the decision tonight of trying to dictate all these changes, I'm not prepared to do that. But so, you know, I'll respect whatever the will is, but that is what I would propose as our procedure.
Thank you. And so I would like to add on to the discussion, and I appreciate the work that the applicant has done to address some of the issues and present a revised proposal. Unfortunately, it's kind of, we're in that catch-22 situation where we're in the middle, we're in a transitional period, working towards our gateway, our Hamilton precise plan, and I would hate to see approving revisions or improvements to the site that might potentially conflict with that precise plan. And until we have that identified and in place, I think it's premature to approve the plan to provide, to improve the gas station. I feel that it's many, many, it conflicts with many of our policies that have already been stated, the gateway policy, the transit oriented policies. It's, that corner is identified for higher density, and I don't see how that would play into a future Hamilton, how it would be compatible with the Hamilton precise plan. Again, it's, we're trying to reduce gas emissions and gasoline use and reduce, you know, our carbon footprint, and I don't see how that enhancing the station would add to, would complement that. And I also, some discussion has been talked about with this long-term lease, but that could change. The market forces, it could change in the next two years, the next five years, and a developer could come in and, you know, want to buy your property. So I think that's a consideration to think about, particularly with the fact that that corridor is a gateway and it's intended for high density and development of the sites that are around it, the prize site, and potentially across the street with the elephant bar. So I'm inclined not to approve the, or uphold the appeal, and, so, uphold the appeal for those reasons.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, when I talked about the options of how to move forward, going back and denying it with prejudice, without prejudice, or accepting the appeal and adding conditions would send it back through the process to go back to staff and go back to the planning commission, as Sergio mentioned. So it's not that tonight we're going to firm up a design or do whatever, but I just, I feel like we have an opportunity before, as we have a bird in the hand. We've got a developer that wants to improve a site, and disagree with Elliot, it is pretty ugly, we want to make some kind of statement, and it's out of sync is the problem, is we're out of sync with all these drawings, but is it fair of us to say, you have to wait for us to get our act together? It's my concern that we're going to end up with nothing, and it's going to sit there like that for ten more years or more. And yes, another developer can come in, but that means they have to be willing to sell. And I don't think we're going to do eminent domain to get anything. So what, you know, is there some way that we could get something to make it nicer, to make it more attractive? And the way to do that is to either deny it without prejudice and allow them to come back and give them some parameters, or accept the appeal with conditions and allow them to come back, but to go back through staff and the planning commission with what that is, because right now it is very nebulous. What is a gateway? You know, some of the criteria or critiquing is subjective. So I would just like to see a way to get something that are benefit out of this. I don't see that I'm getting support very much, but I think it's a missed opportunity.
Councilmember Lopez?
I just have a question for staff. I want to clarify the staff recommendation and just clarify in this discussion, what a vote would do. If we don't specifically say that the denial is without prejudice, would they be prohibited from bringing back a, let's say it's what we would call cosmetic changes? Let's say it's what we would call cosmetic changes to come back with a project. Just what will that process of the options look like?
Well, the denial as currently recommended is with prejudice. So that would arguably preclude the applicant from submitting a revised plan. Since it's substantially the same project. Without prejudice.
For two years or permanently?
Well, technically, one year. That's what the code reads. It prevents reapplication of same or substantially similar project. Without prejudice allows them to do that. So they could come forward for that, and you could consider it, like, as you could consider it. But then it falls into now under the new general plan, which does have that policy that we discussed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Someone want to try a motion?
I mean, I'll just go with staff recommendation, see what happens here. Make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit with site and architectural review and a tree removal permit.
There a second?
That's questionable. Question. The effect of the motions just made, if it were seconded and passed by the council, in your opinion, what would, what at what timeframe would that allow the applicant to come back with a different plan or to come before us again? What are the options there?
With the motion as made, which would be a denial with prejudice, they could not come back with a substantially similar plan for at least a year. If it was a denial without prejudice, they could move forward with something similar. But they would need to refile, pay new fees. And as Daniel said, it would be, need to be consistent with the current general plan as opposed to the older general plan.
I was just trying to see. I didn't want necessarily have to impose a timeline, but I didn't know exactly what the rules were, the codes were after garden.
I asked another question to our attorney. So if it's denied without prejudice, then we could, could they come back under the old general plan? They would have to come back under the new general plan.
Correct, under the new general plan. And any denial, anything moving forward after a denial, they are going to have to be consistent with the current general plan.
And if we accept the appeal with conditions, is it under the old general plan or the new general plan?
Except that it would be under the old general plan, subject to whatever conditions the council would place on it. We would need, of course, to do the environmental review. That would have to go through the planning commission before it came back to.
So just from my own little brain here, and accepting the appeal with conditions would still require them to come back with what those conditions are and would still require the environmental review and would still require them to go back through the planning commission.
Well, I, there's one exception, and their attorney mentioned that a categorical exemption might be possible. We'd have to look at that. And if that's the case, it may be able to come directly back to the city council.
But one of our conditions of approval could be that it has to go back to the planning commission.
Oh, certainly, absolutely. You could remand it to the planning commission with directions from the council.
I would really like to see if there's a way that we could have them. I would hate to say for a year they can't come back and do anything. We're missing an opportunity to get something for us as a benefit to Campbell and having it look nicer.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion?
If I can make a friendly amendment, if it'd be accepted, I could second. If we're, but see if we can get a resolution. I would just add the words without prejudice after the words deny the appeal.
Just a reminder, without prejudice, that opens up what lane exactly?
It would. At least in theory, it possibly allow them to come back with minor revisions to the current application. But it would, the criteria for approval would be under the new general plan. I'd be open to that.
So they still have to go back to the planning commission, and it's the new general. I find that.
Okay, then I would second, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmembers Casola and a second by Vice, or Councilmember Lopez to adopt a resolution denying the appeal without prejudice and upholding the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit with site and architectural review and a tree removal permit. House floor's in our favor.
So without prejudice, they can come back and with a similar project, but they would be making some changes to it, whether it be this one or something else. But they could keep it as a convenience store, car wash, a gas station. If they came back and say took out the car wash, does that then have to start the whole permit over again?
Ultimately, the decision-making body is going to have to decide whether it's a substantial or an insubstantial change. So that would throw it back to the council or the planning commission to make that initial determination.
So if they keep a convenience store, gas pumps, and a car wash, it stays within the parameters of the, without prejudice?
As to exactly what is substantial, that is up to the decision-making body. So there is discretion there on that, on that initial determination as well as to whether you're looking at something that's been substantially changed or not.
And do we need to make that part of the motion tonight to make it more clear?
Certainly would not hurt to do so.
But Bill, how does that, who makes, how does that determination be made? I mean, does staff make that determination, whether it's substantial? And then it goes, they decide whether it's going to go to the planning commission or the city council?
The code does defer that decision to the director, but it is an appealable action to the planning commission and then again to the council.
So in reality, it would probably be, the process would go planning commission and back to city council.
But if the motion is without prejudice, if the issue is moved, since they could reason that, and we would have to discuss how substantially different it is.
Okay. But it would go to planning commission?
Correct, for decision unless.
And does that trigger the environmental?
It would, yes.
It would. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Could we have a roll call? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Casola?
Aye.
Councilmember for Tato?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry? Mayor Bobby?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes four to one. Thank you, everyone, for presenting and our staff for your work on this. Our next item is item 15. It's a public hearing to consider an interim ordinance to adopt urgency revisions to Title 21 related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, to conform with recent guidance from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, file number PLN 2023-132. And our presenter this evening is Larissa Lohman, our assistant planner.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and city council. Welcome, Larissa.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, mayor and city council. Before you is an interim ordinance to implement urgency revisions to the city's local ADU ordinance. This interim ordinance is presented as a redlined version of the current ordinance and is provided as a desk item for item 15. This interim ordinance was prepared in response to direct feedback from the Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD. Per state law, HCD is responsible for interpreting and enforcing all new state legislation that concerns ADUs. While the city adopted an ordinance in February of this year to comply with state law updates, HCD has since interpreted that these updates are different from how we've implemented them and that it's determined that the current ordinance is non-compliant. HCD provided written findings to the city, which outlined required changes to be made. It's important to note that Campbell isn't alone in receiving this feedback. Eighty other jurisdictions within California have also received ordinance review letters from HCD as of October 2023, and these all have similar findings. To maintain enforceability, the city must amend its ADU ordinance to align with HCD's direction. Failure to do so would render the current ordinance null and void and unenforceable. The following slide is an overview of the major changes to the ADU ordinance. HCD's most significant interpretation concerns the number of allowed ADUs on a single-family property. Instead of the previous limit of one ADU and one JADU, HCD has expanded their reading of the government code to now allow for three ADUs on a single-family property if one of those ADUs meets the criteria for a statewide exemption. This now allows one standard ADU, one exempt ADU, and one JADU in addition to the single-family home. HCD's letter has also relaxed regulation for ADUs on local historic properties and prohibited the enforcement of a street-side setback for corner lots. The city's prior adoption of the multi-family development design standards in May removed development standards like height, floor area, and lot coverage across all multi-family zoning districts. To regulate ADUs effectively, the draft ordinance reintroduces these standards as they were previously given. If adopted through a four-fifths council vote, this interim ordinance immediately implements the discussed provisions for about 45 days. This interim ordinance is tentatively scheduled to return to the December 5th city council hearing for an extension of up to two years. Once HCD has reviewed and confirmed this interim ordinance, a permanent ordinance will be processed at a future city council meeting as part of a broader forthcoming zoning code amendments. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt an interim ordinance, reference desk item for item 15, the redlined ordinance, to approve urgency revisions to Title 21 to conform with recent feedback and direction from HCD regarding accessory dwelling units. This concludes staff's presentation at this time, and I can now take any questions.
Thank you, Larissa. Are there any questions? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Do we go back? I think it was the third, the last slide, yeah, right here. Could you just explain that last bullet point a little bit more? More just what is HCD's thinking or any insight that you have into changing that? Into changing the application of that?
For the final bullet point for development standards?
Yeah, did they share insight when they're suggesting the changes into why they're, what the thinking is?
So this is actually an initiative from the city of Campbell that wasn't required by HCD. This is in direct response to the city's adoption of the multi-family development design standards in May of this year. I'm sure you're all familiar with that process. The city adopted these standards to provide objective standards for multi-family developments. And in doing so, they, we've eliminated our multi-family zoning development standards within our multi-family zoning districts. ADUs are regulated through these zoning districts. As I mentioned, some key development standards are lot coverage, floor area ratio, height setbacks. And so what this revision to the ADU ordinance will do will be to reinstate those multi-family development standards in the multi-family zoning districts as they previously occurred. And I actually have a slide which demonstrates what that will look like. So they will just be reintroduced back into the city, the Campbell municipal code to help us regulate ADUs in addition to other minor changes that are not subject to housing development projects fully covered by the MFDTS.
And I, you know, instead of making assumptions, what is staff's thinking and making that recommendation?
Well, because ADUs are not part of a housing development project, we specifically exempt them. We have no standards to regulate ADUs. So we need to reintroduce development standards back into the zoning code so that we can regulate ADU placement, location in relation to other buildings on multi-family lots.
And have you received feedback on whether that change would pass muster with HCD?
Well, because these are objective standards, they meet the government code in terms of regulating ADUs.
Okay, thank you, very helpful.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought up this chart. Okay, so I live in ADU, I live in 400 square feet. I obviously support them, but I have some questions. So I got a lot, I have a main house. I'm allowed two ADUs and a junior ADU.
Is this for a single family?
Yeah. So I have, there's a lot, has a house. We're going to add two ADUs and a junior ADU. So I have a setback in the front. I have these four-foot setbacks. I have whatever the 20-foot front setback, although the ADU can go in the front now, correct?
There is a certain type of ADU known as a statewide exemption ADU, which is allowed to approach into the otherwise required front setback.
You can have 800 square foot ADU and your front setback four feet from the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a house, two new ADUs and a JADU. Is the only open space that I can, that I'm required to leave is 300 square feet? That wouldn't pack the lot with all these buildings and leave 300 square feet, that's it?
You would be required to provide 300 square feet for the primary dwelling. So for this, oh, I'm sorry, this is for single-family houses. So this is actually, would be the R1 zoning district. So it would be 750 square feet of private open space, which would be required for the primary dwelling. However, as discussed within the ordinance and as is currently written in our municipal code, the statewide exemption ADUs are allowed to approach into things such as front setbacks and also into this open space required. And because the size requirement for a statewide exemption is 800 square feet, theoretically, a statewide exempt ADU could approach into the entire 750 feet that would otherwise be required.
So you can have no open space on your lot, basically, is what this is saying?
Well, we do have requirements for floor area ratio and lot coverage, which are still applicable and enforceable, just not for the statewide exemption ADU. So that you get an extra 800 square feet as dedicated to the statewide exemption.
So if the FAR is what, .45 in R1? So that means 45% of the lot can be covered with building?
Well, actually, the lot coverage is 40%, but that's the same idea. 40% of the lot could be covered by building.
Okay, so that is now limiting building to building, wall to wall.
Everything except for the statewide exempt ADU.
Okay, so you have to have floor area ratio of .4 plus you add the 800 square foot exempt one. And then you have your four-foot setbacks, and one can go in the front 20 feet. So there's still some ability to have some level of open space. This is not a gigantic block building filling up the lot.
Correct, and the lot sizes in Campbell are generally larger. We start with our R1.6 properties, which have about a 6,000 square foot lot size, up to R1.12, I believe, even higher. So we do have quite sizable lots here in this state of Campbell. So we still are able to maintain our floor area ratios and lot coverages up until the point of enforcing them for a statewide exempt ADU. That's the only ADU that can approach and exceed the floor area ratio and lot coverage. So everywhere else, the city is able to require adherence to these standards.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
Hello. Hello, I was not claiming I'm speaking on this issue, but I suppose I will. My name is Diane Rock. I live at 763 Emory Avenue. When I moved into this property 25 years ago, we were zoned as an R16. I purposely chose this area moving out of San Jose because I enjoyed the larger lot size. Great place to have it parked in your own backyard. Great place to have it parked in your own backyard. We chose to put an ADU on our site under the old Santa Moss neighborhood plan. So my ADU was six hundred and thirty-nine square feet as opposed to the six forty that I was allowed, needing all of the setbacks that were also required of the same main residence. So I had the eight-foot setbacks on the sides, I had a twenty-five-foot setback on my back from the back of the property. After the city changed the ordinances, my next-door neighbor put in an ADU. Because they are a corner lot, technically, my house is their side setback. However, as a corner lot, the house actually faces Walden. Therefore, they are three and a half feet from my side fence, that is the back of their property. I could not imagine allowing three ADUs, even on a lot as large as mine. They were allowed to go up to twelve hundred square feet. This is not an ADU, this is another single-family home. And although I understand the housing density and the housing prices here in Campbell, and as I said, I have an ADU on my site, so I am all for offering rental property. The thought of having large single-family homes, they're not gonna rent for what is considered affordable housing. So how are we changing the overall feel of Campbell to allow these very high dense, high-density in residential, single-family home areas? And so I'd like to see you not approve additional ADUs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a comment, but also a question. I, I believe this action is to, is basically a ministerial act. We're required to comply with the state guidelines. We don't have much choice in this, and I think in order to be in compliance with state laws, we're almost required to do this. I certainly defer to our attorney to advise us, or me if I'm incorrect.
That is essentially correct. I, I suppose we could try and, and attack in court. HCD's interpretation of the ordinance, they tend to interpret things a little differently than most of my colleagues do in some instances. But, you know, the, the, the general rule of thumb is they are the enforcing body and they are entitled to a great deal of, of deference in how they interpret the law in this regard. So I'm not sure that we would be successful in such a challenge, and it would certainly be a very expensive one that would no doubt take us at least up to the Court of Appeal if we, if we wanted to do so. In the meantime, in HCD's eyes, we would not have an enforceable ordinance of our own and would be required to comply with the simple state law mandates that have even less restrictions on ADUs.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. First off, I really wanna thank staff for bringing this before us. Well, I think that's a good summary of the situation we're in, but it's also, you know, this is a kind of a case of the goalpost changing on us. So it's a lot of work for staff with everything else that we have going on and that we're trying to accomplish as a city to have to keep coming back, and it's not, you know, the first time we've had a situation like this because there was something said on the law that the interpretation is actually different by enforcing agents. So that's not staff's fault, and I'm very appreciative of, of all the work. And I appreciate, I think our commenter stepped out, but the point that I was homing in on with my questions is that, I was just thanking you for your comment and then making the point that, what I was getting out of my questions, which wasn't clear to me, so I appreciate your answers, i- is that that last point there is, is not what the state is imposing, if I'm understanding correctly, but that's actually us attempting to apply our own standards and have some more regulation. So actually adding a further level of, of requirements, which, which I think is, is reasonable given the, the other changes that are being imposed. So I'll, I'll support and then, you know, appreciate also Councilmember Fertado's clarifying questions. So I'll support the staff recommendations for those reasons. I'm happy to make a motion, but, you know, maybe, yeah, first, see if there's any other comment.
I have a question to staff. Are these deed restricted to be no short-term rentals?
Yes, that's correct. All, yes, that's correct. All ADUs within the city of Campbell cannot be rented for a time period of shorter than thirty days, so no short-term rentals.
And that still is, is that in the, I'm sorry, you have so much to read, is that in here that says?
Yeah, that was a previous requirement that has not been removed in the update.
So, thank you. I, like I said, I live in the ADU, they wrote an article about my ADU. I was very proud to highlight that I live in four hundred square feet. I got comments from other mayors in other cities saying, you know, nothing like walking the talk. And it's six-story high rises or spread the, distribute the housing throughout the city. So I, I may not agree with every little nuance of this, but we need housing and we have big lots, and so it's unfortunate that some of the single-family neighborhoods, the character is going to change. But like I said, it's seven-story high rises or distribute the housing around. So I certainly support what we can do to have more housing.
Councilmember Lopez, want to make motion?
Sure. I move that the council adopted interim ordinance, I think for serious issues to Title Twenty-One, to conform with these steps, freshen grounds of health or department of housing, health and security, accessory dwellings.
Second?
I just want to clarify, that is inclusive, because I, I guess it's an interim ordinance of that, that last bullet point that was discussed.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Thank you. Our first new business item is item sixteen, oh, I'm sorry, forgot about the title. Being an interim ordinance of the City Council of the City of Campbell adopting urgency revisions to Title Twenty-One related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to conform with compliance findings of the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD.
I move that further reading be waived. Second?
There's a motion by Councilmember Fertado and second by Councilmember Lopez to wait further reading. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Now we'll go to new business. Item sixteen is approval of the Cities Association of Santa Clara County's proposed joint powers agreement, JPA, and authorization for the city manager to execute the JPA. And our presenter is our city manager, Brian Leavenfall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This item was before you at a study session on October third, where we heard a presentation by the Cities Association of Santa Clara County staff and executive board member representatives. I wanted to recognize, I think, on our Zoom call that we have Councilmember Nisa Flygor, that is with us again this evening. Thank you for being here and certainly can provide responses if there's questions or input, if we need to supplement the staff's presentation here. But as was described at the October third study session, the Cities Association of Santa Clara County is looking to propose a new JPA agreement. When we came to you in the study session, the council had some questions and received feedback on those questions from Cities Association, and it was council's direction to go ahead and bring this item back to the council for formal consideration. It's what we're doing this, this evening. Ask for council's approval of the JPA agreement as proposed, in which if the council were to take that action, we will indicate that to the Cities Association. Understand that in the very near future, their board will be considering the actions of not only the city, but the other cities that have opted in. And we have been told as long as eight cities that are participating, they intend to go forward with that. We anticipate, from the input I've gotten from my colleagues, that we'll at least receive eight, probably far exceeding that. Maybe Councilmember Flygor could, could elicitate that when there's an opportunity. I do understand, as we discussed in the study session, there was questions from the city of Gilroy and Milpitas, and I think those were the only two cities that questioned, but perhaps there's others. I am more than happy to answer questions in the council if you still have them, and unabashedly offer Councilmember Flygor, who was on the call, if she can help answer anything council has as well.
Okay, first, let's start with questions of the council, and then I'll defer to Councilmember Flygor. Any, any questions at the council? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Flygor, if you could speak to the number of cities that are affirmatively responding to the JPA?
Thank you, Mayor, and nice to see everyone again. I've seen a couple of you between the last study session and tonight's meeting. So we have good news. As of nine o'clock tonight, we have nine cities that have already approved it. So we have hit the magic number eight, and we will be moving forward with the JPA. And so we would really love for Campbell to be number ten tonight. The only city that has considered the JPA and has voted against it is Milpitas. Gilroy has not considered the JPA yet, and Morgan Hill is still hoping to schedule it in the next month. So it's looking good, would really appreciate your support. I know we answered the questions you had the last time. I don't know if you have any more questions tonight, but we are looking for an approval from Campbell, and we really appreciated your feedback the last time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item?
Welcome. Good evening, thank you. Liz Gibbons, Campbell resident, past participant in the Cities Association, and I would just like to reinforce, what you all know is that the Cities Association has been an essential component of the city of Campbell's involvement in regional and beyond issues. Many of the appointments which various council members here sit on, be it back bed, be it the emergency operations and interoperability, and it goes on and on, are extremely relevant for the city to be engaged in. And without an organization like the Cities Association, the cities of Santa Clara County would not have a viable role in many, many significant boards, commissions, and discussions. So it's really important to support the organization.
Thank you, Liz. I'll bring it back to council for any discussion and/or motion. How about a motion? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment. First off, thank you for, for your comment, I couldn't agree more. And thank you, Nisa, for all the, the hard work. I have to be honest, I wasn't sure you were gonna make the ambitious timeline that you set, but obviously I, I shouldn't bet against you, so I just appreciate your hard work and persistence on this and your availability for us.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, Sergio's looking like he's going to.
I make a motion that the City Council prove the Cities Association of Santa Clara County proposed joint powers agreement, the JPA, to establish the Cities Association of Santa Clara County joint powers authority and authorize the city manager to execute the JPA.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmembers Sazola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'll reconvene the council meeting and, um, move on to item seventeen, acceptance of organized retail theft grant, grant funds. And our presenter is Captain Ian White. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So this year, the state made available over $222 million in funding to combat organized retail theft, auto theft, parks theft. The, it was competitive grant application process where police departments, uh, submitted proposals, project proposals, uh, to, uh, combat organized retail theft. Police department worked with our stakeholders in our retail community, um, the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown, uh, business association, and received, uh, quite a bit of support from that community for this process. Out of over a hundred and fourteen agencies that applied, only thirty-eight received funding. Uh, we were one and we received partial funding for our project. Um, the project focused on the expansion of the department's drone's first responder program, expansion of the fixed license plate reader program, and the addition of cloud-based real-time information center technology that will help bring various sources of information in that, that we currently can't take advantage of, including, uh, intersection cameras and, and other private cameras. So, um, I look forward to bringing those parts of the project to you in the coming months. But for tonight, staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving an agreement and authorizing the police chief to execute the agreement, setting forth the terms under which the city of Campbell may accept the organized retail theft grant, uh, through the California Board of State and Community Corrections and approve a budget adjustment to recognize the grant revenue and corresponding grant-related expenditures. I did fail to mention that we were awarded $400,562 towards that budget proposal. I'm here for any questions this evening.
Thank you, Captain. Any questions? Vice Mayor Landry?
How much organized theft do we see?
That's a really good question. I think if you looked at the, um, grant proposal, I, I highlighted some of the information, um, that we've received. And if you looked at just how many bill alone, it was in, in the millions. Um, if you looked at what, uh, the letter of support from Ulta and what they've experienced since opening their business in Campbell, it's a significant problem. What I also found during that portion of the process was that a lot of our organized retail theft goes un, unreported by those businesses. And then one of the parts of the project proposal, um, that was unfortunately not funded was for personnel. And really that was for a crime analysis, or crime analyst, um, to help support, uh, those businesses and, and reporting more and, and to really bring that data, uh, to the forefront so that we had better numbers to work with. Um, I, I think there's still opportunities there, uh, uh, to work on that. But I think that was one of the major things to come out of, of that research was that, uh, that portion of it, the organized retail theft portion of it was going way under, under-reported by our business community. Which is something we're still going to focus on, we're just going to have to do it with our existing resources.
Councilmember Lopez?
Really appreciate the questions and the information. My question is just, can you please, uh, pass on my gratitude to Joanna for her work on this? I always really appreciate that we're able to really punch above our weight in, uh, getting, uh, these grants. I know it's, uh, partial in this case, but, uh, definitely still very impactful.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cazola has a question.
Yeah, I was just curious, uh, the definition of organized retail theft. If you could just explain maybe for the public what that is.
So very simply, it's two or more people engaging in an act of theft, um, for the purposes of, and I should also highlight, this is also for auto theft, uh, which we have also seen a significant increase here over here. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone in the audience or member of the public that wishes, wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion if no one else is. Um, I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving an agreement and authorizing the police chief to execute the agreement, setting forth terms under which the city of Campbell may accept the organized retail theft grant, California Board of State and Community Corrections, and approve a budget adjustment to recognize the grant revenue and corresponding grant-related expenditures.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by councilmember Furtado to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cazola.
Aye.
Councilmember Furtado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye.
Move on to unfinished business and item eighteen is a resolution approving relief of bid submitted by Bobo Construction Incorporated, BCI, for the Measure O Police Operations Building Project, CIP number twenty-three dash RR. And our presenter is Todd Capurso, our Public Works Director.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and good evening to the rest of the council as well. Uh, the first of two items concerning Measure O and the police building project. Perhaps this is the least complex of the two, but time will tell. So we are here this evening to talk about, uh, about the bids received for the, for the police operations building. And it's a request for relief of bid by Bobo Construction. As the council is aware, uh, council approved the plans, specs and estimates for this project back in, back in July of this year and authorized staff to advertise for bid. Uh, on October fourth, when staff opened the bids, uh, Bobo Construction was the apparent low bidder at that time. But the very next day, on October fifth, staff was notified, or they notified the city of the, of a bid error, a bid error, a clerical error to be precise, that omitted $5 million from their, uh, from their bid. Since that time, Bobo has, has followed all the necessary steps as detailed in the state's Public Contracts Code, uh, with, with regard to, uh, to proving how the error happened and substantiating it with, with some backup material. Having reviewed all of the materials submitted by Bobo, staff concurs with their request of the relief of bid. However, only the council, as the city's awarding authority, can approve this request. So staff does recommend, uh, having, having reviewed the information, that the council adopt a resolution of, uh, approving the relief of bid requested by Bobo Construction, uh, for the PD project. That would then allow us to move into the next phase of analyzing bids, which we will talk about on item nineteen. That concludes my brief presentation. Happy to take questions.
Questions up. Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, I don't know if it's to you, Todd, or to Bill later. We have a letter here brought tonight by the carpenters local union four oh five. And I know the conclusions say that, um, that we would, we should require Bobo to file an action in court to recover their bid bond. It's making it sound like we might be able to hold their bid bond. I don't think that's possible, but I wonder you two.
I think that, uh, response should come from the city attorney.
Good. Thank you. Yes, you could require them to go to court. We met in, in closed session to discuss that possibility. I, I don't want to necessarily reveal any confidential information that was exchanged during that discussion. But essentially, uh, it is, at least in my opinion, that, uh, forcing them to go to court wouldn't bring us any different, uh, result in the end and would ultimately cost the city more money to do that.
So by forcing them to go to court would delay the project a substantial amount of time. They may or may not get the $2 million bond, but that is, if the court would decide if you could pull the bond.
Right, and as, uh, as, uh, Director Capurso has said, they have, uh, presented substantial information that, uh, beats the criteria for them to get relief. That seems like the most likely outcome.
And the only way to get the bond money would be to go to court.
That the only way to try and keep it would be to go to court, allow them to, uh, to go through that process. And, uh, as I said, that I'm not sure how, how that outcome would ultimately be any difference. Uh, it seems most likely that they would get the relief that they're requesting.
That's most different topic. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just have, um, I, I want to add on it just from a slightly different angle. I'd like to, uh, request, if it's appropriate, that staff follow up with, with the letter. I, I do appreciate, um, the public interest and just in the spirit of transparency. I, I want to personally be cautious because some of this is closed session information. It's, but I feel a staff report would be, uh, I'm sorry, a staff response would be, uh, appropriate if, if that's acceptable.
Any other questions up council? So I'll open it up for public comment. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I do have a, a request from Rigo Galardo to speak.
Mayor, I'm a county council member, I'm Rigo Galardo. I'm a field rep here at Carpenter's Local Four Five in Santa Clara County. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen to express my support for this decision to relieve Bobo Construction for performing the work on the construction project in question. Also suggest for the city to award the project to the second lowest bidder, Laker Construction. I believe this decision is the best interest of our community and the project's success. However, I would like to express my opposition to the return of their bond. Instead, I propose to see consider alter, alternative options for utilizing the bond funds to benefit our community. One option would be to use the bond to offset costs of a new bid and the subsequent construction projects. This could save eligible resources and ensure that the project proceeds fully. By relocating the bond funds in this manner, we can make the most of the situation and support the city's goals of the responsible financial management and efficient project execution. I urge you to consider this alternative course of action in the best interest of our community. Thank you for your attention in this matter. I look forward to hearing your thoughts on the proposal and how we work together to ensure the successful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. Any discussion? How about a motion?
Guys, I'm on a roll today.
Why?
Jumped again.
Go ahead, yeah, I can't let you take them all. So, uh, uh, so again, with appreciation of the public and understanding of, of the interest and scrutiny that this should be receiving, so, um, I'm glad to hear it looks like staff, um, uh, can, can follow up with, uh, response, but definitely, uh, uh, appreciate the, the letter and information there. That said, I'm happy to make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving the relief of bid submitted by Bobo Construction, Inc. For construction of the Measure O Police Operations Building Project and authorizing the subsequent, the subsequent release of their bid bond in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in California Public Contract Code, Chapter Five, Relief of Bidders, Sections Five, one hundred to Five, one ten.
There a second?
Yeah, come on, you guys, you gotta jump in on a second though.
Okay, there's a motion by councilmember Lopez and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cazola.
Aye.
Councilmember Furtado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye.
Item nineteen is to review funding options for Measure O Police Operations Building. And again, our presenter is Todd Capurso, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we foreshadowed with the last item, we're here to talk about the police operations project in a little greater detail. As previously mentioned, back in Jul, on, on July eighteenth to be precise, council approved the, uh, plan specs and estimate associated with this project. And at that time, we pointed out and the council recognized the funding disparity between the amount, between the amount budgeted versus, for the project versus the final estimate. At that point in time, the difference was estimated to be six point seven six million. One of the strategies employed by staff was recommended by our construction management firm, Griffin Structures, was the, to employ the use of, of revocable items in our bid package. And that would provide, provide us with flexibility if needed. That would allow us to evaluate, uh, to evaluate different costs and award strategies if needed and for us to price out the cost of the very specific elements of the projects. And that really is the main point of, of the discussion tonight. So along those lines, you're going to hear a little bit from me about how the project came to be and what the bid process was and how certain elements were moved from maybe the original plan of the building into what we're calling the renovation of the existing area. You'll hear that from Chief Berg. And then upon conclusion of that, we will turn it over to the city manager to really walk you through what some of the different funding scenarios might be. So going back a little bit, and I know this will be like, uh, history repeating itself for some of you up there. But, uh, as, as was said on the earlier item, we, we do things within the interest of transparency so that people have the full story of the project. Our, our Measure O bond was passed back in 2018 and that budget was put together and it was based on a combination of things. It was, it was based on some unit costs and some needs assessments that were done at that time. Um, and of course, you're trying to balance how you can meet the need. And of course, you're trying to balance how you can meet the needs of the city operations. Try to scope out a project that is cost effective and will be an effective use of tax dollars. And you're trying to also put that together in a package that will be. That that the public would would look favorably upon it at at the at the election polls, right? So it has to be kind of a an acceptable combination of cost, funding and scope. And so we think we did that because Measure O did pass with almost seventy percent of the vote. And early on in the in the stages after the passage of it, we did some funding allocations to the point that there was twenty million allocated to the library. Twenty million allocated to PD and ten million was put in this, you know, unallocated bucket at that time that would be allocated as the projects got further defined. As we moved into the year twenty twenty, we put out separate RFPs for the architectural firms, one for the library and one for the police department. And that was to begin our design process. And that starts with the schematic design. And that and that again is trying to balance the needs versus the cost of each project. What could be removed, what should be removed, how much, how much building and how much product can we get? How much could we get for our individual budget allocations? It became clear early on that all of the needs that had been identified for the police department in the needs assessment. Could not fit, so to speak, in a new building that could be afforded. So at that time, there was a a fair amount of discussion. And some of those elements were placed in to, at least from a design perspective, into the existing PD space. And that is not because that they were any less important. It was because that there was a different kind of use associated with those, a different type of space need associated with those uses. Which I will, we'll let the chief talk about that in just a few minutes here. But that did allow us to kind of recalibrate what the budget, what the budget requirements would be for the police building project. And we kind of held to that all the way through our design process. We'll talk about some of the check in points that we had. Not too far after that, actually, we did, we did take stock of where we were with cost estimates. And we did take note of the fact that the PD project was tracking a little bit high at that time. You know, comparatively speaking to what the budget allocation was. And we did remove some some elements from that project. A lot of that had to do with with kind of overall scope and the size of certain rooms. But I will say that we did downsize the building, not only by the amount of. Of areas that were that were removed, that were reprogrammed into the existing space, but the overall size of the building was then. Decreased by an additional sixteen hundred square feet as well to keep us on on track with our budget estimates. As we moved into twenty twenty one. The budget allocations for overall Measure O program were once again revised, holding steady with twenty million for the library. Twenty five million for the PD project with five being left in the unallocated bucket. Most of that increase for the PD project had to do with additional budget allocations that were made to. Work on the existing space in the the existing PD area for those elements that were removed from the building that would be placed in the downstairs area. But there was also significant site work associated with the with the PD project that was not necessarily the case with the library. So I think you know that the library is moving forward. There's minimal site work involved with that. That's the it's limited to the adjacent landscape all the way around the building. But for the PD project, it is proposed location out here in the parking lot. There's a significant amount of grading work that has to be done because you're effectively taking a parking lot, taking that out of commission. And constructing a new building in that site. So the site work that goes into that, how does that then conform to the existing PD space? And then how does that match up with the existing city hall? There's a there's a fair amount of of work that goes with that, to the point that we increased the allocation for the PD project by five million dollars, factoring all that in. In May of that same year, we did take the schematic designs for both of the projects individually back to council where they were finalized and and approved. So we we think we were on track at that point. And that process continued for several iterations. We did that at the at the at the design development phase. We did that through the thirty, sixty and ninety percent construction drawing phase. And over that duration, the construction estimates for this project were largely within the allocation over that time. Probably, yeah, I think the most they were ever off was was one point two million, which at that time was was four percent of the allocation. So we we knew we were a little bit off, but not significantly when you're looking at a twenty five million dollar construction project. Where things really got tight on us for both projects was over the pandemic. And I know we've all got our stories about the pandemic, but this wasn't necessarily a direct result of the pandemic. It was the indirect indirect impacts to our economy. You know, shortly thereafter, when people came back to work and started doing projects. Early twenty twenty one is when we began to hear things about rising contractor costs, the increase in labor costs, supply chain shortages. So there was higher demand. That that then could easily be met by the supply. And that means increasing prices. So over a couple of years there, over the later part of twenty one and twenty twenty two. We saw inflation that exceeded ten percent per twelve month period over about a two year period. And for some sectors in the economy, like certain sectors, particularly in the construction industry, it exceeded eighteen percent for short duration. It wasn't sustained eighteen percent, but we did, we saw little blips over that time where the annualized increases exceeded eighteen percent. So you could expect that that impacted all construction projects. It impacted PD, it impacted the library. And that's kind of what went fed into the point that by the time we got to the end, we kind of had this disconnect. On both projects, actually, to be honest, that need to be reconciled before we we could do the award. Now, in light of the changes to the project scope, changes in the economy and having bid the project. We're at a point where we can discuss actual dollars and and the various funding scenarios. We have a real cost as a result of the of the bid process. And we have costs that we can attribute to each of the revocable items that we have detailed earlier with council. So the six point seven six figure, six point seven six million figure that we discussed in July. Now we have real numbers for the for the two scenarios that we presented to you in the in the council report are either five point nine or eight point seven. And that depends on whether we award the full base project or if we revoke all of the items. Now granted, there are variations on each of those, but those are the two basic scenarios that we brought forward to council this evening. I will say that as those costs have gone up, staff does continue to look for ways to save money across the projects. And while it doesn't compare to the to the funding gap that we're looking for, we're finding that as we move forward. With with some of our utility contracts and the contract that council will see soon for special inspections. We expect that over those two allocations that we're going to see savings of somewhere between between three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Granted, it's not millions, but just want to get the word out there that we are continuing to look for ways to be financially efficient with this project to keep things moving forward. Before we get into that, and we hand it over, we hand it over to Brian, I'm going to ask the chief to come up here. And talk about the process that we went through when we pulled certain amenities and certain elements out of the main building. And reprogrammed into the design of the existing space downstairs. And that is not because, again, that's not because they were any less important and we couldn't and we couldn't move forward. But there's certainly a different cost attributable to building new square footage versus renovating existing square footage. And that was a lot of the conversation that happened over that time. So without further ado, I will get out of the way and hand it over to to the chief, and then we will move on with the financial side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Todd. Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Todd did a great job giving an overview, historical overview of the timeline of the project and the different steps we went through. Thought it would be beneficial for me to give you some more in depth details on the process that we went through of the actual design. Since day one, I've been intimately involved in that, I think sometimes to the churin of our architects, how involved I was. But I say that because this is such an important project to the police department. And we've we've taken that design process very seriously and looking to maximize the dollars that we have available. When we first started this, LPA worked with another firm, MWL, on a needs assessment. And then MWL specializes in police facilities, the nationwide expert on police facilities. We went through where we were at that time, back in early twenty twenty, I guess it was. And kind of looked towards the future of the the needs of the police department and came up with a needs assessment. And it was pretty clear early on that forecasting out the the needs was not in line with the budget that was available to us. And during that time, we we spent a lot of time researching other new police facilities throughout this region and in other states. That that had just recently built new police facilities. And my intent with that was to gain new perspectives and ideas, get lessons learned from them so that we could really maximize maximize our our design efforts. And one of the big things that we continually heard was we never have enough space, we never have enough space. I think that that probably is par for the course when building a police building within confines of a budget. But that was really the goal, was to maximize the efficiencies of the layout of the police department. And entered with with some probably grandiose ideas of what this standalone police department would look like. And soon realized that 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 wasn't the reality of what we were working with. And so we began really taking a serious look at at the the square footage, at what we could use to maximize those funds for. So at the beginning, like I said, the idea was to have a standalone building that encompassed all of our operational needs. When we saw that that wasn't possible, we we looked at our existing space and knowing that the renovation of that space would be significantly cheaper than. Putting it in an essential building that was being built from the ground up. Looked at ways to make those operational efficiencies work out. And in that needs assessment, it covers all the operational needs of a police department. And we took out those what we called non-essential functions, the the functions that 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 were more aligned with storage. That didn't need to be fully functional during major disasters or impacts to to the building. So we identified the primary uses are our long term evidence storage and our evidence processing. And just so you're aware, we currently have that spread out throughout the city. So we have we have space within our existing police department, we have space in city hall, we have space in public works, we have space in the community center. So right now, all those different locations create quite a challenge. But we we looked at ways to have have the design so that the processing. Backed up to the secure evidence storage and finding ways to to make that work. Todd, Todd noted that that during this process, we we actually removed square footage. I think some of you may recall me talking at council meeting probably years ago now about the design aesthetics. Both for our employees and for the public. And I felt that it was really important to have a welcoming building that the public felt comfortable coming to. That's the foundation that the Campbell Police Department is built on, that that partnership with our community, them feeling comfortable coming to us, us working together. And a lot of those design elements were removed from 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 the design just based on that that restricted budget that we were working within. And I I look at. The funding sources that Todd talked about and Captain White was just up here talking about the four hundred thousand dollars in grant funding that that we just received for the organizer detail theft. And over the last two years, I think we're we're approaching on a million dollars that we brought into the city. So I I make that point, not that we, and that's aside from the the three point seven million dollar grant that we we got from the state of California. I say that to say we've been actively working on ways, not just for Measure O, but for the police operations, on bringing in outside funds to support that. And that that goes for this project as well. And unfortunately, there there weren't as many opportunities as I would have liked, but we continue to look for other opportunities. I'll give an example of our June facility that we're looking at that was designed into the new building. And looking at ways to fund that, we've identified funds from both grant funding that we received and have previously brought before council. To use those grant funds to purchase equipment so that it's not coming out of the measure of funds. We're working with our Police Officers Association, they're supporting equipment through their own funds. And obviously, the Campbell Police Foundation is a big supporter of us. So we're looking at ways to to supplement, and that's not, those funds aren't going to cover that. Cost difference that we're over. But I I I think before you tonight is is really the decision on whether or not we we take out these the revocable bid items. And I think the big question, the thing that I really want to to bring home is the needs of the space in the in the phase two that we're calling the existing police department. And I just want to make it clear that. The space in the renovated police department in that phase two is not, was not just an afterthought. Everything that was that is contained in that renovation portion was part of the initial discussion to have in the standalone police department. So I think it's very important to to recognize that that space is important to the daily operations of the police department. And as it stands, I I would say that our evidence storage, as it stands today, is less than ideal. And by postponing phase two or or not funding it, I think is really kind of kicking the can down the road. And there's a lot of different moving parts to that because not only by incorporating those spaces into the renovation. Will will create a safer chain of custody for the police department, for our criminal investigations. For making sure that we have the appropriate chain of custody items for criminal prosecution and bringing justice to victims. But it also opens up other space within city hall, and I know the city has received funding from the state to to do other improvements here at city hall. And there's thousands of square feet from the space both within the city hall that the police department is using that will be freed up by by incorporating that into the renovation. And both here and at the offsite locations that I mentioned. I'll just end by saying that that we are extremely excited about getting started on this project. A lot of work has gone into it, a lot of thoughtful work has gone into it. We have have recognized that that the budget situation from day one was was not ideal. And we've been constantly looking for ways to 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 bridge those gaps and and create the building that's going to to work for us. You've heard me say before that I think we've already outgrown the building before we've we've built it. But that's not to say that it's not, it's not going to work for our needs. We're very excited about about that. I'll just say that when you're making this decision, I want to just throw out that about twenty years ago. When the police department outgrew its space, the decision was made to put two temporary trailers. I want to emphasize that we're temporary trailers out in the back lot for patrol and traffic. And those temporary trailers that were meant to be there for two to three years are coming on twenty years old. And I recognize that that there's a difficult decision to be made with with funding this. But I also want to recognize the men and women of the police department. Are the hardest working police department in this county and beyond, and I can say that unequivocally because I see the numbers and I see the work that's going on there. And nobody has complained about working out of a trailer. They they recognize the situation that we're in, but I would say that 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 pushing those projects down. We I have concerns about ending up in the double Y trailer for twenty years and what that impact could have. Because you've heard me talk about recruiting efforts and bringing new people on. And one of the big things that we're all excited about is is showing the pictures of what this new building is going to look like. And it really has attracted a lot of people. Just emphasizing that the the phase two and the renovation is a critical component of of that entire project. So thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
All right, so.
All right, so thank you, Chief Berg and Director Caperso for those comments. I want to bring the council back to the staff report and what's being presented to you in the staff report. Discussion a little bit. Tonight is the first step in the process. Obviously, as the staff report says, the next meeting, we will be coming back to with consideration of a contract award to Lathrop, who was the second low bidder. And we wanted to have that discussion this evening just on the framework of the funding mechanisms so that if there's questions or directions or concerns, that we can address those between now and the next meeting. To recognize that as we talk about these potential funding scenarios, that we won't have all the answers tonight. But our our hope is that we're going to address the two questions that are contained at the beginning of the staff report. I'll go through those with you. First is which, part of the proposal from staff is to consider reallocating and redistributing Measure O funds between the library component of the project and the PD component. We want to get your feedback on that. And then second question is, with the award of the PD contract, we proposed two different scenarios. One is which, base project without the revocable items. And scenario two is, I'm sorry, scenario one is the base bid, as it is. Scenario two is the base bid minus the revocable bid items. And we want to get the council's feedback on that. In a general sense, under the first scenario, without the revocable items, there is sufficient Measure O funds to award the contract in your next meeting. If the council chooses to redistribute those Measure O funds as staff has suggested. With the second scenario, I'm sorry, with the first scenario, which does not remove those revocable items, there is additional funds that are necessary to fund those improvements, about 2.2 billion is what's necessary. So we're really proposing to you two scenarios. First scenario, everything that was proposed in those bids, it's going to require an additional 2.2 billion dollars. Second scenario would revoke the renovation of the existing space and those related items, in which case there would be sufficient Measure O funds. What we're asking for you is some feedback on that. And if we, the council's inclined to pursue the first scenario that we propose, then the question becomes, what sort of revenue sources is the council willing to consider? And what I want to try to avoid this evening is doing math ellipses here at the dais and I'll break out our calculator and try to do a mishmash of these funding sources. The staff will do that work for you between now and your next meeting. What we're looking for this evening is some general direction, a comfort level. Perhaps there are some funding sources that are off limits to you, you just don't want to consider. And perhaps others make more sense. I know in my discussions with council members, we've had discussions about several of these funding sources. And we can go through those in detail tonight. But I want to hold off on the detail till we have that broader discussion. We kind of understand the path we want to go down. And then based on council's feedback, we can give you more detail on that either this evening or as we report back at the next meeting. And perhaps even if the council's unsure about a few funding sources, when we come back at your next meeting to award the contract, we can flesh out both of those different scenarios that give you exact dollars of what it would take to make that happen. The staff report suggests a few different categories to consider. This is not an exhaustive list. This is just a list of what we think are probably common considerations. There may be other ideas, including, and I've heard council ask about whether or not there can be any sort of operational savings through our operating budget. And there is some possibilities for that. It gets a little bit more complex, so I won't go further in that area unless we go down that path. But the the real crux of the issue is scenario one, need additional 2.2 billion pieces of measuring funds. Scenario two would revoke those items, you have sufficient funds now. But if we're going to review, if we're going to pursue those revocable items by looking at rescoping the renovation of the existing space, do we cost higher architect to redesign that? There would also have to be rebid of those revocable items at a later date in which we would be at the whim of the market. I could tell you that my guess is that things aren't getting cheaper with inflation. If we bid them in the future, they will be more expensive. Which leads me to believe that if you re-scope that work, you're going to have to re-scope it beyond what you really need in order to financially make sense to pay for an architect to redo that design work and then to rebid it at potentially higher construction rates than what you're seeing today. I will also tell you that the bids, the actual dollar bids that we got from the second low bidder, Lathrop Construction, that we're talking about this evening, has given you a pretty good construction bid for those revocable spaces. And as it was proposed, the total cost by Lathrop Construction for those revocable spaces is, I'm talking about the renovation space, not the trash enclosure, but the renovation and the time extension was about 2.2 million dollars. And our construction estimate was 3.2 million. So just based on our estimates, we're not seeing the construction bids come, in most cases, far below what our estimate is. In some cases, they're over. As you know, the total project cost from Lathrop was slightly over engineers' estimates. So when we see bids come in below our estimate, it makes us a little bit excited. That's perhaps an indication that's a really good price. Doesn't mean that we should be compelled to take it. But I just, when we talk about the finances of this, the bid that you're getting for that space now is not only a good deal, but to rebid that later, you're likely looking at a more expensive bid. I just wanted to share that with the council as well. So with that, the staff report has a couple of tables in there. There's a table in there that talks about the funding sources. But more importantly, as we get in, further down in the report, is the table that I was referring to. It's labeled Use of Funds, Police Project Two Scenarios. And there's three columns there. The middle column is Scenario One, that is the full base bid that I talked about. That's everything that we bid out. It includes not only the new building, but it would include the revocable bid items, which is the renovation of the existing space, the time extension to renovate the existing space, that we would have to provide the contractor, there's a cost to that. And the third revocable item, much less significant but still important, is the trash enclosure that the city still needs to complete with this project. So those are what you would be talking about when you talk about the revocable bid items. I also want to just add one clarity because we did receive a question on this about the ad alternates. So we talk about revocable items on one hand and ad alternates on the other hand. The only ad alternate that would add cost to everything is, there was one ad alternate and staff's not recommending that council consider that. We'll certainly go into more detail if there's questions, certainly describe that when we do the bid award at the next meeting. But the reason we're not recommending to add that alternate is first and foremost, we're already well over budget and that would add costs, not take away costs. The revocable bid items would reduce your cost below that base bid. The ad alternate would add cost above that base bid. So what you see in that table that I just pointed out under Scenario One, if we were to consider the ad alternate on top of that, would add $841,000 to that total that you see under Scenario One. Staff's not recommending that, but the report talks to not accepting the ad alternates. And I want to explain that a little bit. That ad alternate was for solar canopy covers for some of the police vehicles in the parking lot. And we were going to be receiving approximately $200,000 in grant funds. So to do that ad alternate, not only is it going to add cost to the project, but it's going to add general fund expenses of over $600,000 versus the revenue we bring in to be able to do that ad alternate. So without getting into too much more detail, I probably went too far to convolute this. Really looking for feedback on using the existing Measure O funds and moving those over to the PD component. And then for council's feedback on the potential funding sources, if you're interested in pursuing Scenario One, of what funding sources you would be a mental to look at when we bring back the discussion in your next meeting.
Thanks, Brian. So let's begin with questions. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you all for for the presentation. My question's actually for Gary, if you could come back up. I'm wondering if you could say, help me understand a little bit more operationally, what it would mean to, let's start with defer the revocable items. And I know you spoke a little bit to some of the potential impacts on recruiting, but he helped me understand operationally a little bit more with that, how that ends up impacting us the next few years.
So just to give you a broad overview of the renovation, the vast majority of that space is long-term evidence storage and evidence processing. There's also the armory, SWAT storage, some other storage spaces within there. But focusing on that evidence piece of it, so as it stands right now, we have very small evidence processing room within the existing police department. We have a evidence technician who has to clear that space out on a daily basis based on the amount of evidence that our officers take and then transport that to different locations within City Hall, Public Works, the Community Center. It creates a lot of inefficiencies. And we actually had an outside company come in and do an audit on our on our evidence. And when I said earlier that it's less than ideal, I mean, that was the feedback that that we received from them just based on the condition of our storage. So if we deferred Phase Two, then we would continue working out of the existing, we would have to remain within the space. So that space wouldn't be freed up for any other uses. We'd have to continue using the space within the existing police department to process evidence. We would have to continue using all the different locations throughout the city for that long-term evidence storage. And I will say from a chain of custody, I can't emphasize enough the importance of that because, like I said, we're the hardest-working police department. That means we're taking the most people to jail per officer, right? Most reports per officer in this county. And with that comes a tremendous amount of evidence. And part of that criminal justice process is the appropriate processing of that evidence and chain of custody and storage. And I I I am concerned about the potential impacts of leaving that unchanged how it is today. It has caused us some potential concerns and issues in the past. And I would like to avoid those. So there's there's those specific concerns related to the evidence, to the efficiencies of moving these pieces of evidence around, picking them up for court and and the location of the ability for officers to properly handle and store that that evidence. I'd be happy to answer questions on the other spaces, but I think that's the bulk of it and that the long-term evidence storage within that space is specifically designed to meet the stringent standards of evidence storage. And
That's helpful, I appreciate it. Just to make sure I'm understanding the revocable item that we're talking about here is the renovation that's Phase Two. How? So you're saying if we don't do that, we wouldn't be able to to free up that that space?
So in the new
It would stay, we would have the new evidence storing facilities at the at the new site. We wouldn't, that's part of the renovation.
So the new building,
At the new building.
The new standalone building, that was that was one of the pieces that was taken out of that building because we couldn't afford it.
Got you, yes.
So it was originally to be in the standalone building. We couldn't afford it, so we used the renovation space. So if we don't renovate, we're still going to need to use all of our existing evidence storage and processing, which is both within the existing space and throughout the city.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks for putting that together for me.
Vice Mayor Lethrop, don't sit down. Hi, Gary.
Hello.
Okay, so all the evidence storage is in the existing Phase Two, right? All your evidence storage. So Phase, the main building, you take everybody out of the trailers, you take everything out of existing building. What would happen if the revocable bid item was not awarded? You're taking things out of the building, you end up with empty space down there? How would that work if, you know, I mean, I'm like, okay, you're building it new to fit the evidence. If you leave evidence where it is, which is not ideal, what happens to that room then when you get everybody else out there?
If we didn't, if we didn't do Phase Two?
If you didn't do the Phase Two?
So we would still have, so there is there is no evidence processing or storage in the new building?
I understand.
So we would have to continue using the existing space, whether it's renovated or not renovated? So we would have to continue using the evidence processing as it stands today and all the off-site stored, long-term storage? Because that evidence room, as you've seen it, it's quite small and there are a limited number of cabinets. And that's just for temporary storage until our property and evidence technician can take it off-site. So we would have to continue using the existing space as it stands today.
How much, okay, I don't know what the square foot, what is the square foot of the existing space that you have? Not counting all the trailers and everything?
Just the processing?
Your footprint inside the existing City Hall, what, 10,000?
There is, there's several different spaces within City Hall.
Just the part downstairs, not all the evidence rooms all over?
Oh, I think that room is probably, if you don't include the cabinets, 100 square feet, maybe?
Okay. So I maybe this is to Todd of the Thanksgiving. In the revocable bid item, is the parking lot renovation in the revocable bid item?
I believe the parking lot is not revocable.
Okay, so if we get the new building, we're going to get at least that. The trailers go away, parking lot gets renovated, so the new grade change and all that occurs, correct?
Yes, to a point though, because we're not making the changes to the existing building. So the conform is more about connecting the two parking lots, right? You can't really do some of the changes that come up to the existing building. But yeah, we would have to do some conform work. But we wouldn't be taking the parking lot all the way out and regrading it like was the proposal.
And that's already in the revocable bid item?
A portion of that is. It's very detailed when you take, when you, you know, when you take the plans apart, what, how much of the parking lot is, how much of that remains and how much does not? Just like the exterior, the exterior demo on the
The stairs go away?
The stairs do not, the stairs are part of the revocable item. So if we don't do the revocable item, the stairs stay.
Okay, both the So the revocable bid item is basically the building?
Essentially, yes.
So if we do not award that, how much of the parking lot would still need to be done? Because you have to do conforming grading to connect, half?
I think more than half, I think it's, it would largely be done, but I don't, it's not complete.
And and are the plans clear enough with what's revocable that no other design costs are going to be occurred to make this all meld together and conforms and all that?
It's pretty well defined, but but there are changes, right? I do not believe that in the revocable, if we revoke the, I don't believe we're doing the demo of the locker room facility, for example. And that that was a big portion of what opens up the parking lot.
The locker room is the extension off of City Hall?
The extension, yes.
So it, so that would stay?
Would.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. Because I want everybody to understand this, is what is revocable in the bid? And then the other question is, say I want to take out the cabinet, we can't take that out of the base project or the bid, right? We cannot be value engineering the bid right now.
Well, you don't value, well, I think the short answer is no, we would not.
You're not allowed? You're not allowed to take a bid that we got that was a low bid, and you're not allowed to start cutting scope out of it to get down to a project, right? You have to award-
You have to award what, what we advertised, and then we can begin the change order process, if you like, to remove items. But as we stand now, we have essentially the, we're calling it two scenarios. It's, it's actually more than that because we, we could theoretically pick and choose on the revocable items. But as Brian said, the trash enclosure is, is, is fairly minimal cost. So it's simpler at this point to kind of look at it conceptually as the full base bid or the base bid without the revocable items. There, there are, there's essentially a, kind of a variation of that if, if, if you want, but it only, would only be the trash closure, which would only save about 180 to 200,000.
So if we don't, where would the trash go? Cause the trash is in the parking lot right now. You need the new parking lot.
Trash is out of that parking lot.
They've moved the trash out of there.
The trash to a non-enclosed area in what we call the gravel lot, which would be essentially the new location of the new trash enclosure, and it would be built to current standards with sanitary sewer connection, a roof, and it would serve the needs of the entire City Hall complex, including the new police building, the existing City Hall, and the library. So we would have a centralized location.
Okay, and, um, where is, where did we do with FFNE? FFNE is the finish floor, or finishes furniture and equipment. Basically, you turn the building upside down, things fall down, that's under FFNE. Where's that money gonna come from?
Some of the FFNE was moved into design and some was moved into a standalone capital project called PD FFNE. So as we have, you know, perhaps, maybe not as, as, as memorable as I would like it to be, but, uh, we've discussed that previously where, where some of the items that are kind of like bolted in FFNE, when things that are fixed will be, uh, spec-ed and installed as part of the construction contract. And that, that determination has been made, what that allocation is, so some of that moves in. And we move funding into the construction project for that from the state grant. And then the remainder of the FFNE, which comes later, is actually a separate capital project. So at this point, the city has four separate Measure O projects. We have the library project, we have the PD project, we have the PD FFNE project, and we have the unallocated, what we call the unala, it's the old Measure O project. So we have four separate CIP projects that we're tracking.
Okay, so in the budget summary, right now, there's no FNE, FFNE saying that where that money is. That's already set aside?
It does reference the state grant as part of one of, as one of the funding sources. And that state grant, we've taken, that was a $3.9 million grant that we got that was to cover the backup generator and all of the FFNE built-in, purchase out, all, all of it. And so we have moved, and I'm, I'm remembering this off the top of my head, I think it's 2.4 million or so of that 3.9 was moved into the construction project budget, and approximately 1.5 remains as a separate CIP project where we will come in after the fact and furnish the building.
So in, in the summary of money and all that FFNE, the one point whatever is not-
Not the standalone project is not in there.
Okay, and what does, uh, is commissioning of the building, is any of these, I didn't see it specifically described?
It's not specifically described. It's part of the scope of the contract.
So in the money we approved, the commissioning would be included in the money we, in this decision that we make?
Correct.
And, um, all right, so, so I think that was it for the, um, another question. Oh, uh, Brian now. How do we get 3.7 million left over from the library? Says transfer from the library project. Where, what was the, I thought we only were 1.6 underestimated?
Uh, that was, uh, generally correct, uh, but that estimate was 1.7 or 1.8 under what we had budgeted for. Estimate was below what we had budgeted, and the contract came in below the engineer's estimate. So the total difference was three points.
Three point seven, okay, cause I only remembered the 1, 1.7 or whatever there. Okay, and I think that's it for right now.
Questions?
Thank you. Councilmember for Todd, do you have any questions?
I don't have questions or comments.
Okay. Okay, um, then I'll open it for public comment, and I do have a few speaker cards. Uh, first one is Michael Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello?
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Michael Sanders. I live at 609 Campbell. Um, I'm also the president for the Campbell Police Department. We've worked rather closely with Chief Berg and his team on doing residents and things which raise money for like the program and all. Um, having worked construction for my lifetime and knowing what it takes to, like Brian was talking about, issues of delaying projects and not initially doing them, you have the issues of architectural fees and everything that have been hanging on. It behooves the council to approve the whole scenario. A lot of attention to the fact that also as Chief Berg was talking about, as well as, uh, uh, the issue of the fact that he pulls stuff out of the building and put it back into a renovation space, which they did to cut costs, means that they don't have those spaces available. And also, as Chief mentions, it's not good to have the whole evidence issue spread out of place because it doesn't keep it well-contained in one area to keep it from being contaminated or damaged because it's stored somewhere else. There's less control. So I think it would be wise for the council to approve the whole scenario, the line, including the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Diane Rock?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to mention that, um, the resolution that was passed in 2018 to authorize Measure O stated that the bond issued, that the bonds issued were to finance the cost of improvements. And the improvement shall include, without limitation, not may include, shall include a new police operations building and 911 emergency dispatch center that would utilize up-to-date crime-fighting technology and to be able to adapt to future needs resulting from new technology and operational standard. Making sure that we have a clear chain of control with an evidence is not a new operational standard. But that is what we are trying to create and what the city council promised to the voters when they put Measure O in front of them. Additionally, it says that the improvements shall include renovation and make seismically safe existing police building for other city purposes. I do not see how you can separate and create this into a Phase Two without setting the city up for potential lawsuits from the voters who voted for Measure O. I would like to suggest that perhaps we look at some American Rescue Plan funds to help offset the cost for what you are calling Phase Two. The local fiscal recovery fund may be used for pandemic response, which includes responses to violence as well as an infrastructure for public safety, both of which the city police department would fall under. Additionally, as you have increased the ability, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Elizabeth Giffens.
Before I begin speaking, something was said during one of the presentations, and I would appreciate just a moment, how longer than my speech took, uh, so that my speech had, prepared speech has credibility, something that was a little bit odd different. So if I may. To provide a police emergency operations center that is fully operational during disasters and an innovative library and seismically safe, accessible and energy-efficient facilities meeting current safety codes, shall the city of Campbell's measure be adopted? That's the actual language. The city's, the council's fiduciary management is a core to its responsibilities. That is, making sure that all funds received and spent by the city are appropriately managed. Tonight, the council is making fiduciary decisions for Measure O bond funds to be approved that were approved in 2018. The staff report shows a cost overrun of $9 million. Recognizing council may have information that's not currently available to the public, the report does not provide the council with the alternative for not incorporating the remodeled existing police space in City Hall or other revocable scopes. How is it that those programmatic changes could be implemented? Of the $10 million allocated of shared costs referenced in the staff report, it's relevant to note that the $2 million was assigned to Campbell 3D project for additional site-specific site work, 2500,000 for shared site work, and 2.5 million of renovated existing PD space for other uses. All incorporated, the identified budget is 27.598, uh, thousand, billion dollars. On behalf of the Campbell voters, by request that the council be provided and made public the full cost of the construction completion consultant services, commissioning, FFNE purchase installation, and moving costs for the currently proposed, uh, building. It is $1.5 million in state grants set aside decision, this is sufficient for the FFNE. Is the staff plan to fund the relocation and move all staff equipment and storage to be via the annual budget process? Two, following the city's best practices retaining 10% contingency for all projects, please provide the funding and approval process to cover unanticipated or owner-directed changes if the contingency funds are not included. Three, what contracting and funding processes will be used if the scope, its revocable items are deferred? Recommend, as, as identified in the 2023 housing element and by HCC, HCD reviewers every review as a risk, consider utilizing the ARPA funds to address the housing needs of some 60 seniors, families, and disabled residents that might be homeless in 2024 to 2026. Maintain the city's policies replenish reserve funds and allow the library to use its Measure O allocation and grant funding for further energy efficiency as defined in the ballot measure. And my comment is, I stipulated here that there's an overrun of nine, nearly 9 million. The city manager's presentation said you were discussing an overrun of 2.2. That assumes that you use 3.7 from the library, 1.5 from, um, other allocations, and 1.5 from something other allocations. So there is a $9 million overs, overrun that, that the statement is to be put in the context of that. That is my clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Steve Saunders, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman. Steve Saunders, Campbell resident and member of the Major Oversight Committee. How do I want to say this? In all deference to Chief Berg, the members of the Major Oversight Committee were given a tour of the existing facilities that are being renovated. And my impression, not being an expert in anything like that, of the evidentiary mechanisms there, the kind of Rube Goldberg or Mickey Mouse, and really they only seem to function because we have really competent, dedicated people. Um, I don't think that we should always count on that type of stuff. We should actually provide the facilities to provide the services that we say we're providing. Uh, so I actually favor the first scenario. In addition, there is a mention here of the interest on the bond funds, which we haven't expended yet. Uh, I can't see where you would ever justify spending that money on anything but Measure O projects. I'm sorry, that money came through Measure O, it wasn't bond funds. Oversight committee has nothing to say about it, but I really want you to direct that money there, whatever. And once again, I think we need to do the whole project. And we're gonna leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else in the audience, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to council for comments and hopefully some direction. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you so much to, uh, everyone who presented and answered questions, all the commenters who all, all have, uh, thoughtful perspectives to add. Um, I, I can't see not supporting, uh, Scenario One, uh, both, you know, and the reason is I appreciate the chief's answer to, um, to, to the questions, but the point that I also want to emphasize because it, it hasn't been emphasized um, e- e- enough is that, um, the way that the, um, it was structured is that if we go for these revocable items, um, i- it's actually, um, essentially gonna be a, a $1 million savings relative to the amount of, of work that we're, we're gonna get. Um, and I, I just, I happen to agree with the city manager's assessment that i- if we were to go back out for that in the future, I ju, I don't see any world in which we get anything close to that level of cost, let alone not have massive, um, uh, overruns. So I'll just, I'll, I'll start with, with that, and, um, I hope there's, there's at least some agreement there, uh, to, to shape the discussion. I know there's other issues, uh, to get into, but I just wanted to start with putting that, uh, on, uh, on the table. And, and I, I guess I'll just probably more efficient if I offer some of my other thoughts. I, I, I appreciate the, um, some of the, the mechanisms that, that have, um, been, been mentioned by staff for, for coming back. I think they're worth looking at. Um, I'm hoping using some amount of ARPA funding. I, I really very strongly want to make sure that, uh, we're not putting all our eggs in one basket in terms of pulling from ARPA funding because we do have other critical, uh, priorities, some of which, which were mentioned and others which we've discussed, um, that, uh, I, I think we still need. But, uh, that said, I don't see why a, a good portion, um, could it come from the ARPA funding. Um, I also happen to be a big believer, um, I think this project would be an excellent candidate um, for further state, maybe federal grants, that federal's a little bit tougher, but you actually have some, some flexibility, uh, potentially. That's gonna obviously be, be a little bit longer of, of a process, but, um, I think when, when staff comes back, uh, it, it's worth really fully evaluating that and the options, and we, we can all play a role in, in helping be advocates. But I think this project would find a lot of, uh, support among our, uh, representatives. I, I, I know staff has been having discussions, but I think there, there's more opportunity, um, uh, there as well for, for, uh, pulling from some of those funds in, in the future. So that's just my, my initial take.
Thank you. Councilmember for Todd?
Okay, well, we've been studying this whole process for a long time. And I just want to say at the beginning that nothing that we are doing has any negative reflection on the work of the police department and the work they do and their mission. Uh, I mean, I think we all agree that they're doing an excellent job. We're very proud of our department and our workers. We are looking at the funding element of this, and we do have fiduciary responsibilities. And we have to look at what funds are available. Now fortunately, the picture is somewhat rosy in terms of some potential extra funds that we have. But none of that is guaranteed, and I think we need to sort of remember we have the overall responsibility for the entire city and all the departments and all the things that we do. And we have to kind of keep that in mind as we go ahead. I mean, I, I wish we could do a lot more things than we can do. But I still think we're gonna have an excellent project when we're done. Uh, it's just the, you know, the sequencing and the order of it. Um, I know various, uh, sources of the so-called funds that we need to kind of meet the deficit uh, that we kind of experience, uh, are available, but yet we still have to be cautious about that. In terms of transferring what anticipated right now, uh, money from the library fund of about 3.7 million dollars, I hope that comes true, and it may very well, uh, but I don't think we can, we should plan on allocating that money until the library is in fact built and we see that those kind of savings are there. We are basically taking the current building of the library and we're going to significantly remodel it and improve the access and things like that. We certainly, and everyone has been very conscientious about this in terms of trying to, uh, make sure we anticipate our costs and so on, but we just never know about these things. So, I mean, this decision can still be made in the future, and I hope that money does in fact become available. The, um, the interest that we have earned, uh, on the bond so far, that can only be spent on Measure O. That is a legal matter. We can't take that money and spend it anywhere else anyway, so it's very good. We do have that interest. That is insured, uh, for Measure O. The, um, the surplus on the city revenues, in other words, city revenues that have come- The, um, the surplus on the city revenues, in other words, city revenues that have come in so far are one point seven million above what the city budget provides for. That is good. Uh, in terms of where we should put that, we still are underfunding some of our reserve funds. We have to keep that in mind, that those funds still have to be built up. And, um, there is some money of about one point three million dollars in unallocated funds from measure O, which is good. Again, all of these are sort of contingencies that we don't have an answer to. Some speakers made reference to this, but I can't help but going back to it myself, looking at what the voters voted for, what they were told was we would take the library building and remodel it, bring it up to standards and so on, yes? And we would build a new police building, which I think we obviously are obligated legally to do, and that's what we want to do. And to make it a very nice, modern building to meet our needs. And so therefore, the revocable items are things that can still be done. But here's, here's kind of the way I sort of look at it right now. The space that is not currently remodeled or planned for can still be used for an indefinite period of time until, you know, hindsight will show us what funds are available to us and whether we have the money to do that. And the other part of that is that once we build the new police building and people move in and get settled and so on, we would have a better hindsight at that time of monies, not only monies that are available to go ahead with the revocable items, but also whether we want to continue to bid that exactly as it's currently designed. At that point in time, we might feel that, um, we need to change what we're envisioning right today for that, uh, vacated space, uh, so that certainly portions of it would be available to the police department, but maybe portions would be used for something else. And we'd have a better picture at that time of what our real needs are and what money we have available to that. So I guess in the interests of, of being a little bit conservative and sort of holding myself to a higher fiduciary responsibility, um, I would think that we should go ahead and build a new building, of course. We're more guaranteed and assured that we have the funds to do all of that. And then consider what we want to do with the the old space, if you want to call it that, whether we still want to bid it exactly as it currently is envisioned or whether we want to change our mind at that time in terms of its design and what the costs might be and so on. Doesn't necessarily, I mean, yes, we can anticipate the cost will be higher than what it is right now, but but maybe we want to design that a little bit differently, or maybe even expand it in some way, I don't know. So that's why I'm suggesting that we definitely approve scenario that we definitely move ahead, of course, with the, with the new building and award the contract and so on. And that we hopefully will have the funds at the end of that time to look at what's available to us. And should any emergencies come up or anything of that nature, if that hasn't happened, we can go ahead and decide what we want to do with the old space. In the meantime, that space is still available. It's not, so it's being abandoned and not available to us. So that's how I'm looking at this right now, uh, just in terms of all scenarios. I, uh, I do feel that the presentation of the staff tonight, with all due respect to everyone, but I've got to be honest about it. It seems like you're really sort of encouraging us to make sure we include the whole both the, the new building and the revocable items in this. I would have hoped for a presentation to sort of, uh, balance this out a little more. But I'm just looking at the funds available, and I've been studying these measures just like everybody else has for a long time. And, uh, and likewise, uh, I've invested a lot of time and effort looking into the work of the police department and what they do and supporting all of the new things that we're doing and supporting, uh, the police officers. Previously, when I was on the council, I, I made sure I understood this very well at that time as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice, Vice Mayor Lannister?
Oh, tough decision. So I objected to the way the revocable bid item was being put in the specs for exactly the reason of what happened. There is no way we are ever going to get that cheaper price later. The overhead and profit for the revocable portion of this job are included in the basement. So even though, what was it, Brian, two million? Two point two million, and our estimate was three point two because they've taken it and put it in the basement. So had they been bid separately, the police building costs would have cut down some, and then the revocable, what people calling phase two, would have gone up. So the situation that we're in right now, this is the best price that we're going to get for the revocable bid items. There is no way later that we're going to get it any less. We're going to pay it a lot more and we'll be closer to the three point five million dollars. So from, from knowing that, I don't know how we cannot award the revocable because you're never going to get it cheaper. And yes, we can evaluate at the end what to do with the space. When to pay more two years from now, even if we redesign, now you're not only going to pay to, to build new space at a higher premium, you're going to pay architects, you're going to go out to bid, you're going to do all the whole steps over again. So the price that we got for the revocable bid items is a fair price because of the way we bid it. If we had bid it two separate, the building costs would have gone down, the revocable got up. We didn't do it that way. So I don't know how we're ever going to get that lower price again, that to me is a given, especially two years from now. Economy isn't going to tank that bad, I don't think. So I see that we are, if we are going to move forward, we have to do it the whole bit. So now the question really comes down to money, and where do we get the money? I'm going to complain a little bit here. From day one, I always felt they should have left more contingency in the design. Every line you draw has money. They got rid of, the architect got rid of the contingency early on in the job. Prentlis and I kept complaining, you're getting rid of it now. You're going to design, the project's going to get too high. That's exactly what happened. So I have to complain a little bit about that. I blame the architect for using up the contingency early on, but we are where we are. And to move backwards is going to cost us money. If we don't do something, it's going to cost us more money. So really what it comes down to is where are we going to get this extra funding for? And what I was hoping, and Brian briefly mentioned it, is what can we save operationally out of the operating budget? That even if it's a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, is there something in the operating budget? Do we have staff that we have positions left open that we could use some of that funding? I don't know. I didn't see anything in here about operationally how we could try to add some money to this. So I, I'd like to hear more of where people want to see the money coming from, but regarding the award, I think we do have to award the whole project because we are never going to get this to cost less than. There is just no way two years from now. And Gary has made it very clear of what the need is for the evidence, and I would hate to see cases start being thrown out of court because you can't follow the chain of command or evidence got contaminated or something. So much of the, the trial and the cases and convictions are around the evidence that's involved. So having a secure, efficient facility, I think, is important. Also, still not clear yet, if we don't build the revocable, kind of this conform, what stays, what goes? Do we keep the trailers? Where do we keep SWAT stuff? I mean, SWAT's in the one trailer right now. I went in there, couldn't believe it, packed. They have a swan room, you have to duck to get under the little door. So I, I think I've made it clear, from my perspective, being in the industry, this is the cheapest price that we're going to get. And I think it behooves us to have PD be the best and most efficient. I'm still sure, you know, I still don't know the best way to get the money. And again, I'd like to see a little more information about operational savings, uh, what we could look at hate to say it, but in the PD's budget, a way to help add some money to the difference in price.
Councilmember Schizola?
Yeah, I'm glad you spoke before me. I think that was really well said. Uh, I can't really disagree with anything. I think everyone's made great points up here, and ultimately it does come down to money. Where do we get it? And also, I keep hearing the cost savings right now. I am concerned totally. I can't reemphasize that enough because I, I know how it is when, oh, uh, actually, we're not going to go with this bid. It's a new time and age, and we all know about this crazy inflation that's been going on in past years and all the other problems. And so, yeah, it does seem like we're, you know, you know, I, I've been here almost a year now. A lot of the decision-making, you know, I have no part in, but we are where we are right now. And I am seeing that cost savings right now, but it is, that's the question where's the money? I don't know where anyone on this council right now really feels. I'd like to get a feeling of where, where we want. I heard a little bit about possibly getting some from operations, but, uh, you know, ARPA funds obviously are there. I mean, we have, have this right here. Uh, I like to, I'm personally a person that likes to keep the reserves as high as humanly possible, you know? So I'm a little reluctant to, to be pulling from there, but I just like to hear, you know, what everyone else is thinking here. All, you know, where is this money going to be coming from?
Okay, and I'll add on that. Early on in the process, when the voters approved the bond measure, fifty million dollars for two buildings is not, not a great pot of money, especially when you're building a, a, a police facility, an essential services building. And so, um, it was going to be a challenge from the get-go to be able to, to afford this building that, and the needs and the, and this, and the scope of services that the police needs today as well as, as future. And, um, so I, I, and I appreciate all the work that's been done to consider that, the budgetary impacts as, as the process has gone along and, and trying to, to balance out the, the building. But, but it was clear early on that the, the whole operation, police operational operations wasn't going to be able to fit in, in the new building. So it was very clear that we're going to have a new building plus renovating the existing space in the PD to provide for the, um, the other, um, essential services that the police department provides. And I, I think that it's important that we go with scenario one. I don't think that choosing scenario two is going to save us any money. In fact, it's going to cost us money in the long run without, without having to rebid the project. And, and that said, I, I also, uh, Chief Berg talked about the trailer, he gave the example of the trailers, and to me, this is, we have one bite of the apple here to really provide a, a, a nice facility, um, state-of-the-art facility and, um, have it last into the future. And, um, I just see that if we don't approve the, the revocable part, that we're going to end up two years down the road and we're going to be scrambling, trying to find money. My experience with the city has been that we're always trying to cobble together money to, to improve our facilities. I mean, the perfect example is the trailers that have been here for twenty years. And this is our opportunity to do it right, assuming that we can find the money and, and have the, um, the additional, you know, use of funds, possibly ARPA, possibly, um, the savings from the library building. And if we, if we can come up with a plan that addresses that, I would support the, the scenario one. I, I think that's, we just need to move forward and, and, um, build a facility that the voters intended for the city.
Just my way of clarification. I just wanted to mention that many years ago, this council, some of it, we actually had planned to build a new building for the police department. And this was before the trailers were even there. And so we started the plans of all of that. At that time, what we were going to do was we, we were going to build on to City Hall and extend it out, and that was our intention. We found out unfortunately that we would be prevented from doing that, not because we didn't necessarily have the money to do it, but because the rules in place at the time said the police buildings must be seismically safe, and they must be standalone, or in other words, you really could not, if you will, attach them to a current building that did not have the same seismic standards. So therefore, we were forced to abandon that plan. And since, um, what we did in the meantime, it was get the trailers, but it really, it was our intention to do it temporarily. So it wasn't like a permanent temporary facility. We made the best decision at the time. So I just think for historical purposes, we have to look at that and sort of just, I just want to state that fact that it's not like it hasn't been thought of before.
So what I'm hearing is that, um, let, let's go back to the questions that, um, were being asked. So let's talk about, does the city council agree with redistributing measure O funds between project components? Yes. Is there consensus of the council on that?
I'm sorry.
On item one of this, of your staff report, Dan, the, um,
Yes.
The question is, does the city council agree with redistributing measure O funds between project components?
Between the library, in other words, what is anticipated to be the library contingency?
This, yes.
It's not the contingency.
It's, it's the savings.
It's, it's the library savings.
Right, it's not the contingency. It's not the savings.
Well, except that's not guaranteed. We anticipate that savings, but we don't know that that's going to happen.
No, no, no. The, so let me just clarify. The library contract's been approved. The cost to that, we know that cost.
Yes.
There's a savings of about three point eight million. We're, we're estimating in this report, three point seven million from that library with the known cost today. We're also reserving a ten percent contingency
Yes.
for both the library and the PD
Correct.
for construction.
Yes.
But those costs we have for the library are no cost. Unless we, something's wrong with those costs, we, uh,
Well, I mean, unless, unless we run into a problem, right, with the building? But, I mean, if we find it, it's not seismically safe or something, or we find some big crack that we didn't know about it. I mean, that, God forbid those things happen, but I mean, the savings is not an absolute guarantee is what I'm trying to say. We're certainly anticipating and hoping that's the case.
Yeah, so the, the way that we do, the, the construction contract is known, uh, and that is a known cost. We have a ten percent contingency. It should cover all unanticipated costs. I think in the scenario where, uh, you exceed all of those contingencies, then we, we would be back to the drawing board, but that's not anticipated, as you said. Uh, but that's the plan, and that ten percent construction contingency is, is normal for this construction-type project.
Okay. So I think there is consensus on that item. And the second question is, additional funds beyond measure O are required. What funding sources would the council wish to explore? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I'll come back to what I said in my initial comments, which is that, well, so I mean, I think the easiest for the reasons that others have said, uh, is the one point five in, in interest earnings. Um, what I will generally say about the rest is, uh, I, I'm open to a combination of any of these options, but there's significant risk to relying too heavily on any one of them. Again, for reasons that have been said, whether it's pulling too much from reserves or for the surplus for all these reasons. So my request would be that, um, I know staff is going to come back in two weeks to really evaluate the right mix and think about the risk profile that we would be comfortable with. And, and so to get feedback, um, on, on not just is this the right mix, but is it the right risk profile that, you know, that we're comfortable with going forward as a council? I'm not comfortable, you know, I, I think some of that is going to have to come from ARPA. I, 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 I do think there are other critically important priorities, um, that some of that ARPA money needs to be used for. So I guess just again, overall, I don't want to see too much from, uh, any one pot. And I am optimistic, and it, we're not going to necessarily know in two weeks, but I think there's a strong possibility that we could really go out and, and make a case and talk to our representatives, including us on, on this council, and, and see what kind of possibility there is over next year for going back and adjusting, um, some of the budgets where we're pulling, uh, from, from other funds. So that would be my other preference would be to really So that would be my other preference would be to really be aggressive, as I know we have been. But, you know, I think there's more of a possibility to go after and tell the story of what has changed, how we've been fiscally sound, the work that staff has been doing and how, yeah, there's still this need due to factors outside of our control. And I really think we can be successful in pulling some funds. So that's just my, that would be my preference.
Well, I'll just say that I think that the 1.7 million in general fund surplus, in other words, we took in more revenue than we anticipated. I think we can allocate those funds, at least from my perspective. I would use some caution on ARPA. I would sort of say that as kind of a last resort kind of thing. But I'd be a little careful about using ARPA for that. I would suggest we try to find it elsewhere first.
Councilmember Scollo.
Yeah, like the, not, there's the, you have all your eggs in one basket. And in this regard, it would be like, don't pull all your eggs from one basket, you know, like I agree in the kind of trying to maybe spread it out. I think staff would know, maybe find that magical, you know, space for us where it's like, oh, see you a little bit from here, a little bit from here. You know, reduce the risk. I think that's a great idea. Also, I definitely agree that maybe, you know, even us up here maybe can talk to our friends in local government and, you know, see where there might be opportunities. Of course, staff has been working hard on finding grants where available and seeing which ones are worthy of putting time and effort into. And so I really do want to reemphasize that maybe that's another way for us to get significant funds. As I know, we've got some pretty significant funds as it is, but there's always, you know, like you said, tell the story, just like, hey, we're in this situation now, you know, unanticipated, you know, much like many cities, I'm sure. But, but, you know, is there any possibility of getting help in that way? So I would agree that that's maybe the safest place to go is just kind of spread it out and just really aggressively pursue any kind of type of grants that might be out there now or in the not-too-distant future. It's going to take us a couple of years to actually have this building up and ready for people to go in there.
Vice Mayor Landry. I forgot to ask this question earlier. One of the bullets says general fund or CIPR reserves. What about the regular CIP?
Oh. Let me try to explain this without making it too complex. The city's general fund, unrestricted general fund is spent both in our operating budget and can be spent in the CIP budget, two separate budgets, as the council's aware. The CIPR is our reserve element of the CIP. It's really just general fund money. You're maybe taking it from one pocket and putting it the other. So there is not an endless bucket of funds in the CIPR right now. We barely have enough money in there to do what we're getting done. But it is a mechanism that we could use to funnel money either from our operating budget or through these underfunded sources into the CIPR for a temporary, hopefully temporary time period. If we're successful with grant funds, those monies could be returned to the original source and grant funds could be used to fund the CIPR instead. The CIPR is just a, that itself, a self-sustaining funding source, it becomes really a pocket to hold the money in. The money's got to come from somewhere else.
It's a cash flow management.
Correct. Yeah. And as we know, part of this project isn't going to be funded, the expenditures aren't going to happen in year one, as they happen over time. Year one, two, three, there's opportunity to see additional fundings, as was mentioned by some of the council members, for grant funds. And maybe supplement and push some of that money if it came from your general fund reserve or came from surplus from last year's budget. You could return that money back into reserves if you've got grant funds. So there's a way to use existing reserves now, maybe to create the cash flow that's necessary to approve the contract and then supplement that later time with additional revenue sources. And same thing when you asked and I mentioned operational. We can look when we do the budget, if the council wants us to, as part of our budget process, to look at what we can take from next year's budget operating, almost like we would an expense item and make a transfer to that CIP reserve from our operation budget. And you would see that in the context of everything else we're doing, not just with PD, but with the city. And decide whether that was a priority of expenditure of your funds, as you know, when we do our operating budget last year, we didn't have enough money to do everything we wanted to do. So I don't know that that's an end-all answer to this, but there could be some piece in the here in the council kind of, as I'm hearing the feedback, not putting all our eggs in one basket, maybe pulling some revenue from different funds so there's not a big hit on any one of those funds. That could be a small piece of that. I don't think it's the whole solution, but there could be a small piece of that that could probably come from our operating budget.
I think it's getting late. I'm getting tired. My question was about the general CIP, that there's projects identified with budgets. Are there projects that could be delayed or postponed from the CIP to take money out? Is that, that's basically what you're saying is that could occur?
Yeah, we would do that analysis between now and the next meeting. I don't have, as I sit here right now, I can't say, oh, we would take the money away from project X or project Y. Some of those projects are funded with restricted funds. We could use that. We would have to find a project that was going to be funded with general fund money and then find something that was acceptable to the council to defer. Because obviously that project wouldn't get done. We could look at that between now as one of the potential funding sources. I'm not sure that's going to be the complete answer, but it may be a piece as we talk about trying to bridge that gap.
So I'm in favor of the whole project. And the interest earnings obviously has to stay within Measure O. The general fund surplus, use that. I would like to see more information about the general fund CIPR reserves, where we could save money on other projects. I mean, we're basically tightening our belt right now. And if it means a little bit less over in another spot, then so be it. I don't want to see all the ARPA money used. I think there are other uses that we could use. And it would be, I don't think we should put all those eggs in this project. And then definitely pursue whatever future grants, but I don't think we can make our decision on what if, if we get future grants. We need to secure this money and that would be, the CIP to me would be the ones that would benefit. If you take it out of CIP, whatever now, that project, if we get the grant, money goes back into PD, then that project gets refunded. Some transferring the money around and looking at the operational expenses, you know, even if it's a half a million dollars, it's a half a million dollars. So I would like to see our more information come back about that. Councilmember Fertitta.
With all due respect to your comments about grants, I mean no disrespect, but you know, people don't give you money to build buildings. They give you money for programs and specific things and it's small amounts, which help can offset. But I just don't think we can depend on grant money just due to someone's goodwill to help us build a building that we have a shortfall on. So I just, we just need to be conservative and careful about that. And it's a very big unknown.
And I just want to clarify two brief things if some of it has been lost. One, Councilman Fertitta, I'd agree with your point. I want to clarify that, and maybe I should be more specific to talking about grants. I think the opportunity that we're going to have is to work through the state and perhaps federal legislative budget cycle to get a budget allocation. So not necessarily a pre-existing grant, so it would be more of a conversation or requests, you know, a recent example being the conversation we had where Secretary Bourbon came in and those do tend to be for capital projects as opposed to ongoing operating costs. I think that's where the potential is. And then secondly, you know, I'm kind of speaking in shorthand, but of course, the way that we would operationalize is we're not going to know ahead of time, hey, you know, we're not going to assume that we're going to get the grants. We're going to identify funding in other places and that, you know, you call that a refund, that's a good way of thinking about it. Then if we get it, I just want to make sure we build into our planning to really be aggressive going after those. But appreciate the comments.
And I would add that I do think that we, of course, use the Measure O bond interest earnings. The general fund surplus would be okay with me up to a point. I don't know that I would support the whole surplus being applied to this project because again, the surplus, part of the surplus does go into the CIPR. So I think we have to balance our needs there. And I agree with exploring future grants. I know that the amount is unknown and we may not ever, may not get any grant, but we need to, as a staff, explore that for potential, especially, there are grants available at the federal level. So we just need to be a little more, I think, diligent in trying to get those. And I'm leaning towards using some of the ARPA funds, but limited amount of ARPA funds for the project. And I also, would also like to look at any savings that can be achieved through operational reductions that could be applied to the project as well. Does anyone have any more to add?
I just want to thank staff and everybody for all this hard work. This has been, what, 2018? We've been here trying to get this done. The end is in sight and I appreciate all the work between the city. I know finance was involved, public works, PD. I'm sure everybody's had all hands on deck and this is such a critical decision. It just seems like every effort is done. That is our fiduciary responsibility is to make sure that we've done this right.
So Brian, do you have enough direction from council on moving forward? Okay. And I don't play, do we want to forego the council committee reports this evening?
I'm fine with that.
So I'll adjourn the meeting at 11:10.